Get settled, apologize that we just finished up a meeting. So we're all getting settled here. But can we have a roll call?
Mr. Capadia?
Here.
Dr. Lilis.
Here.
Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Slotman. Dr. Stiliano. Ms. Williams Galliano.
Here.
Dr. Wilson. We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. Please join me in the flag salute. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 7th, 2025. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter an executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon FiOS Channel 32, and the school district website www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who wish to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with record keeping. Can I get a first and a second for approval of the February 24th regular meeting? I'm sorry, the January 27th, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed or abstaining? Minutes are past. Like to offer this time to our favorite school student representative.
Throughout February, there have been many achievements at the high school. The Hopewell Valley Montgomery Ice Hockey Team won the CBC Championship last week. The HVCHS Robotics Team won third place in the Digital Animation Award from the first robotic competition. The newest inductees of RO Kappa, the Social Studies National Honor Society, were inducted last week. There have been many, there have been several achievements from teachers as well. Ms. Dur, our art teacher, was selected as the New Jersey State Art Educator of the Year by the National Art Education Association due to exemplary contribution, service, and achievements in the field of art education. Several members of the HVCHS staff continue their tradition of donating their Super Bowl pool funds to local organizations. This year, they donated a $500 donation to Princeton House, which provides mental health support for the community. The HVCHS Theater Program is now preparing for its winter musical, Alice by Heart. Their first night of the show will be this Friday, February 28th. And finally, the Student Council last Wednesday attended the CBC Student Council Symposium hosted by Allentown High School. As we met with different members of different student councils throughout the county, we were able to learn and strategize about different ways to bring more school spirit into the high school. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, please feel free to say. Thanks.
I am going to keep my report brief because I am going to talk more in depth about the referendum with the, and the budget with the help of our, our Board Administrator, Bob Calavita. Just quickly, I know that you all have received the letter that I sent out about lice. I, I'm hearing that there's cases out there that parents are not reporting to us directly. And, and that's, I'm not sure that everyone understands that they should report that to the schools so that we can keep track. So the number I shared in the letter to you are what we've identified in that parents have reported to our nurse's office, or we've identified ourselves in the building. And it's about 17 cases. I'm hearing there's a handful more out there that people have not called us directly. We hope that you do call us. What we promise moving forward is we will send a letter like that every time from the school. The principal will send it out if there's one single case. What we don't do is what we all remember back when we were kids. That's no longer the science or the practice where they used to, remember how they used to pull us all together? They used to check every head, they'd send somebody over here with the scarlet L. The other ones would go over here and you would be excluded from school until the lice were mitigated. Those of you who have had lice in your house, ringworm, all these things, it takes weeks sometimes. And so kids were truant and out of school for weeks when they couldn't, the parents couldn't kind of remediate it, or they didn't have the money to buy the kits, or whatever those things were. Or it traveled through siblings, which a lot of these cases are, several of these cases are siblings. So it's going through the house. So the CDC, the Association of School Nurses, our school nurses who have about 148 years of experience as school nurses and ER nurses and trauma nurses. All of our school nurses have worked in industry before they came here. Our school physician, the Executive Superintendent of Schools of Mercer County, all agree that Hopewell is following the policy as we should. Because in the past, when we sent those school letters, peoples were bullying each other, they were blaming your kid for giving my kid lice. Kids were staying home, parents were ashamed and didn't tell when their kids had lice because they didn't want to be excluded from school because they had to go to work. All of these things were something that the science deems is not a health risk. Is it a nuisance? Yes. Is it frustrating? Yes. Is it horrible to have to fight that when you have that in your house? I agree with all those things, that's horrible. But we do, we don't do those things anymore, nor should any other district in Mercer County. So I can't account for what other districts are doing. I did my due diligence because I was surprised at, at the change too. And I did all the research and I've asked all the people and the school physicians as well, and this is what we are supposed to be doing. So it's really something, I can alert you to it, but parents have to mitigate it. I've been talking to the board about, you know, ways that we can support you. One is, is educating parents. A very gracious parent who's a nurse has offered to sit on a board and I'm a panel. I also would like to invite our school physician and maybe some other pediatricians in the community to kind of share ways that you can fight it when it's in your household. I would hope that you all communicate it with us. There is no shame. It doesn't mean that you're dirty, your house is unclean because you've contracted lice, you know, somewhere. And it's also hard to nail down exactly where it's coming from because we're having it across schools, not all in the same classroom and different grade levels. But I promise you, moving forward, I will send you a letter explaining that we had a case, things that you can do to mitigate it in your home. And I'm hoping more people will communicate to us when there is a case. So one, the nurse can help guide you and help in getting rid of the lice. And the second is we can keep track of how many cases so we can know how, you know, how we can support you as a school district. So I just wanted to share that and I'll continue to work on this and dig into this. But as of now, I still only have, we've only ticked up to maybe 18. One more parent reached out and said that they had a case. And just for this month, these cases are for the year, mind you, since September. And so how many for the month of February? Four. So I know it seems like it's a lot going on, but until we have people report, we really don't know how, how many we really have. And so we can, we can really target it. So I wanted to share that before we move on. Is there anything else that I missed?
No, I just, I think your final point was that it is since September, these numbers, they're not in the last month. This is an extended period of time, so.
But I'm going to concede, there's probably cases out there that people haven't told us about. So that would be helpful if people could just share that with their school nurse. Okay, that being said, I'll reserve the rest of my comments for when we get to the budget.
That means it's up to you.
So we, we're going to give a kind of an abbreviated budget discussion tonight. Just a little history of where we've been and where we're going. We are awaiting the Governor's Budget Message, which is tomorrow around lunchtime. Following that, we will, should receive our state aid allocation on the 27th, which is Thursday sometime during the day. They don't give you a time, it just, you get a note from the county that says it's been released. After that, we'll discern whether the board will meet in March to discuss either state aid cuts, state aid gains. We'll see what happens on Thursday. The next big date after this week, next month's meeting on the 17th of March will be the adoption of the tentative budget. Followed by its submission to the county office no later than the 20th of March. The period of time from that date through the middle of April, the county office, the county office Department of Education will be evaluating the budget for completeness, compliance issues, and ultimately their approval. Upon which time, we're able to advertise and hold a public hearing on April 28th, which is when we will strike a final budget. So that's kind of the timeline for now. We're going to dwell on some of the slides that we've hit before, just the priorities that we are looking at this year. Again, trying to stay clear to our mission statement. To maintain as many of our existing programs and services as we can, given the limited budget that we do have. Again, continuing to pride that academic program that we all value, to make sure our curriculum is aligned with state requirements, to meet our contractual obligations with our staff members. And also to continue evaluate the needs for the new housing that's been going up in three separate areas around the community. And possibly additional housing developments in other communities as the years move ahead. And again, because of those things, we're trying to develop a budget that prepares us, prepares us for an uncertain future. So some of the things that we've done during this fall and early winter season or late winter season, looking at our revenues. As you all know, we do have a 2% tax levy cap. That's the amount of money that we can legally raise without waivers. Now, we will qualify for an enrollment waiver this year of somewhere in the area of $1.8 million. That's just a, that's a trigger for what health benefit costs are really increasing statewide, that there's that, the waiver is that big. Believe it or not, we did get an enrollment waiver this year of about $250,000. So enrollment from last year, that's October of 2024, compared to enroll, no, 23 to October of 2024, increased enough that the state is granting us a waiver for increased enrollment. So that, that's a positive sign for us. We did get a state aid notice from the county, the state this week, last week actually, that said we can be advised to expect no less, no more than a 3% cut. So no more than 3%, less than what we got last year. There was no other clarification to that. We could get more, but we, we are in a waiting game until Thursday. The fact that we got an enrollment waiver is a positive sign that might trigger us getting additional state aid. But again, we won't know until, until Thursday afternoon. We are monitoring our locally generated revenue. When I mean that, that's revenues that we make outside of, of taxes. So we do charge tuition for certain programs that we run in our district. We have a preschool program. We take outside students from other schools into some of our special ed and regular ed programs. We have some of our staff members bring their students, their children to our district for fees. We also rent out our buildings for our athletic programs, arts programs throughout Hopewell Valley, use our facilities and pay a nominal fee for that. Going into next year, part of the things that we've worked on or made sure we considered in the budget, we will. This budget includes a reimplementation of athletic and co-curricular fees for anybody participating in, in extracurricular activities next year. And we also are going to continue with transportation fees and plan to fully charge for what it costs us to hold a seat. Which right now is in, in the around the $1,000 area first aid. We also have to decide on how much surplus we're going to put into the budget. As I've said from the beginning in the fall to now, last year, we used close to $4 million of surplus money, which is money expenditures and revenue that went unspent. For whatever reason, we generate excess revenue, it, it goes into what's called surplus. Not money sitting in the bank, it's money that's been identified as money that's been set aside through our audit. That can be used to help balance next year's budget. $4 million is, is too much for us to, for us to sustain. We're trying to cut that number at least in half right now. So that's what we're using as a, as a basis of this year's budget.
Bob, I have a quick question. So who gave the notice on the state aid fluctuation number?
Department of Ed.
It came straight from.
Treasury.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I, I was just asking, because the funding formula that they're currently looking at, that was actually a huge point of contention at the committee hearing. It was about whether they allow the fluctuation year-over-year aid to be based on previous year's allocation of aid or a district's operating budget, so.
Right, well, that's the question that we all had.
Right.
When that came out, because there's no clarification and we've asked the county to explain it. And all he said was, what we've been told is no district will receive less than 3% cut, or more than a 3% cut.
Got it, got it.
Now, I don't, every year, they've been rerunning the formula and if you talk to Robbinsville and East Brunswick.
A new formula and then 3% right? Or based on what our, our operating budget was from last year? We don't know. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He seemed to insinuate that it was based upon what we got last year, which means, are they going to run the formula? Are they not going to run the formula? Is everybody getting, I don't, we don't know. We, I guess we won't find out till he speaks tomorrow and we, and we get our, our.
Number.
Allocations on Thursday.
I mean, the bill that's sitting in the legislature doesn't, it, that's what's the huge contention right now about whether it's operating budget or the.
Yeah. Yep. So again, the things we've been contending with all fall and again into the winter, inflation, as we've seen increasing, I mean, the health benefit waiver alone shows, you know, the state, the state health benefits plan is increasing aggregate of 14%. That's, you know, that's just, you know, astronomical. I think that it's a split number. I think health benefits are going up 14 and the prescriptions going up 25. And it nets out to 14. But it's just, it's an astronomical number that, that all school districts in the state of New Jersey are dealing with. You know, curriculum and instruction, we, we've been struggling and I know Dr. Plitz is, is trying to figure out how we're going to do with, you know, little to no curriculum writing in the, in the coming year. Transportation is a, is a, you know, for most of the people who use it in this district, it's, it's a mandated service that we must provide. Minimum 3.6% increase. And go back to, what's our cap? Two, 2%. All these things are increasing it greater than that. Insurance, both health benefits, we talked about that, but our property and casualty insurance, and also workers' comp and student activity insurance is all are increasing. I did get some better news today that our workers' comp modification factor went down this year. So that may show some dividends towards our workers' comp insurance, which is, is, to give you just numbers, fast numbers, about $800,000 a year, just for workers' comp insurance. Again, we had a tour of Bear Tavern last month. We had Tollgate about a half an hour ago, we finished that up. The continued cost of maintaining these facilities in our district, which the youngest at this point is 22 years old, and the oldest are approaching or have exceeded 100 years old, including this building. Special education, again, a driving, a driving cost in this district. It's the, it's the outside tuitions that are charged by the private schools that are, that are causing us the most consternation at this point.
And why he says that is because they can raise their tuition rates at any point during the course of the year and a half. So we, you know, we start out at the beginning of the year, Ms. Dardo knows we have these number of, of students that are out of district in these placements, and this is what she budgeted for, for the year. And then they'll send her something a couple of months later saying, no, it's actually, you know, gone up substantially. And we're not moving the child, the child needs to be there. But there's no cap for them at 2%. And so that's what we've been struggling with. And even if they waited till the next year, we can plan for that. Because if you're already in the budget, you have to take it from somewhere else now.
And staffing, you know, we are, we are a staffing organization. We don't make a product, our product is your children. And it costs the staffing of what we have, and 70, 80% of our budget is, is staffing and health benefits. And technology continues to, to grow. We are, are, as you are, dealing with, you know, how to deal with AI in our schools. But everything that we do now, almost everything we, we install in, in our buildings has some technology component to it, from fire alarms and, and, you know, Wi-Fi devices. There's always, there's, there's a huge technology component. And we are also dealing with, with the growth in Hopewell Valley. We didn't anticipate students in seats at the, you know, as much, as many as we've seen, but they are coming as, as, you know, accounted for in that waiver that we're getting from the state for, for enrollment.
I just want to underscore the point where, you know, in the previous slide where you pointed to the things that you are doing, the administration continues to do to manage the budget. I think we often say we're really fortunate for the services we provide here under Ms. Dardo's area. But I want to underscore that bringing our kids back into the district costs us far less, and we want our kids home, close to home. And so while we often talk about just the term, you know, special education, I think in the previous budget, that's the line that matters, is how many kids are we bringing back home so we can serve them here? And if we need to, absolutely they should go out. But it does leave some portion of our special education budget way out of our control. And where we can mitigate that, we, we want to do that.
It's actually brought us some savings because we sell seats to our programs, to other schools.
But some children need out of district placements because they're medically fragile, whatever the needs are, and that, we need to provide that as well, right?
So over the course, again, of our budget planning, we've looked at things that are, are being taken into consideration and, and actually taken out of the budget. We are looking at, at class sizes going up next year. Not, not drastically, but they will be going up that, you know, difference than what you've seen in the past. The, the teens, the classes in the teens and the low twenties may, may give way to class sizes in the, you know, the low to mid twenties. Again, I mentioned we are going to, we talked about elimination of, but I think we are going to move forward with charging the full cost for courtesy busing. We have looked, we've reduced supplies, supply accounts globally, in almost every area, we've, we've reduced supplies with the single exception of, of facilities of maintenance. Those supply, that supply account has been held flat for at least 10 to 12 years, and we, we just can't afford to, to drop that with the amount of repairs that we've been having to make this year. We are examining a world language course of study, either eliminating it or phasing it out over time. Again, based, everything we're doing is based upon enrollment. The auto shop right now is not included in the budget. We have not been able to find a teacher for that when the previous teacher retired. So we are not planning on, on being able to run that program next year. We are looking into field trips, not eliminating them altogether, but eliminating the district funding them. If field trips are going to happen, they would be funded by either parent pay or PTO pay, things like that. Again, mentioned the reinstatement of the athletic and extracurricular fees. That should provide somewhere in the area of $225,000 in additional revenue to support that particular, those programs, those programs. We are looking at all of our K-12 exploratory offerings, meaning the special area classes, not, you know, the, the elective type classes. And again, reducing based upon enrollment and, and looking for different ways of, of providing that instruction. I don't know if Dr. Treese wanted to talk about that more.
What we're trying to do right now is maintain all the programming that we have in the middle, in the elementary schools. We not, may not be able to do it to the frequency that we used to do. So we're really looking at all of the exploratories and see how we can still offer those at a more cost-effective way to, to the district.
Okay, and as always, you know, we're looking at some possible restructuring in our administrative areas, all of our administrative areas throughout the district, and how we can do things more efficiently. We, so I'm not going to get to that yet. We are close to having a balanced budget prior to getting state aid. Still working on, again, it's a daily, it's a daily battle, is, is trying to sever off pieces of the budget. Tan and I are working close together. We, we are continuing to get retirements. Last week, we probably saw three or four retirements, and we are making plans on trying to replace those individuals. These are positions that need to be replaced, but trying to replace those individuals or make plans to replace those individuals out of savings. You know, you have a teacher going out, you know, after 30 years of teaching experience at the top of our guide. We are hoping that we can bring in teachers lower on the guide and taking some of that savings and putting it into the budget at this point. But, you know, we will know more, I will know more on what I need to do come Thursday afternoon, and then we'll, we'll be moving forward there. But at this point, I'll open it up with questions from the board.
I just have a quick comment and then a follow-up question related to that. So I know the board's aware of this, but I just wanted to share that in our policy, even if we reinstate the athletic and extracurricular fees, there is a waiver for students whose families are, are low income. So I just wanted to let folks know that. And then my follow-up question is, is that true also of the field trips? So if the field trips are parent-funded, do we have the same waiver for children who come from lower-income families?
Anything that we do that, where we charge parents, there's a, there's always the waiver if you qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's the basis that we use it for.
Thank you.
And I can say with this district, our principals really have a hands-on relationship with the families. They know even the people that haven't qualified or filled out the paperwork who need that help, we provide that as well. I know this is, this is up in the air. These are cuts that we have to make just based on the way they're funding schools. All of us are facing this. Mr. Capadia talked about the, the very contentious conversations that are happening in Trenton around the lack of funding that schools are facing. And we're all facing these cuts, these increases in class sizes. Us not sure what the future holds. I know folks have brought up the question to me about what does the federal changes mean if that department goes away? Right now, we are functioning, assuming that that's not going to affect our funding. We are also taking into account, what does that mean if, if our federal funding changes? But right now, working with just the assumption of possibly a 3% cut based on however they calculate this formula, where are we? And we're already in a hole. So when folks say, you know, why are the buildings in this condition that you can't save up for these things? It's sort of like you barely can make your bills in your house, and then you have all these other things you need to do. Like you have to pay for food, your electricity, your transportation, all of those things. And you might put off the fact that your porch needs to be replaced, or you might put off that roof and just get it patched until you can't patch it anymore. Or you might put off that roof and just get it patched until you can't patch it anymore. That's what the district has been doing for years now. And we're at a point that we're not going to get ahead on some of these repairs unless and until we have a referendum where we can plan ahead and avail ourselves of some of the money that the state will match us with. Because the way we're going, we cannot swirl, swirl away enough money because we can't even make the obligations of our fixed costs now. So with that being said, if there's no other questions, we can maybe transition to that.
We'll get to one second. Just wanted to, she mentioned, Dr. Trese mentioned federal funding. We did also get some kind of clarification from the county office or county board of Ed Friday as well, that federal, the federal funding that we receive, the title monies and the IDEA grant are believed to be untouched by any of the measures being taken right now by the federal government. But those are expected to come this year. We're supposed to expect to get that money. It may be less. So instead of, where we were always forced to budget at least 85% of what we got the year before, they're telling us the budget no more than 75% of what you got in the year before. So that, and again, federal funding is less, less than 1% of our budget. So, I mean, it's nice to get it. It's about $1 million in educational program that we get. And hopefully, it won't be, it won't be as low as we thought it might be.
Yes. So, yes, I'm going to tap Paulette with that. But right now, we're exploring universal preschool. There are some grants and monies out for that, but we're going to share.
Yeah. So we're in the process of exploring the idea. Two of the big factors that we're uncertain is, number one, are they going to provide that federal grant for the '25, ' '26 school year? The second one is, if they do and we apply for it, we have to be granted it, and that's uncertain. But we've been meeting with community leaders. We've been meeting with several districts that have been incorporating universal preschool. And we are seriously considering it. But to do it, we want to do it the right way. So right now, we're at fact binding and think all the families who responded to the survey, we had, I think, over 600. And I think it was like 96 or 97% are in support of it. So, but right now, we're still in fact binding, and we also have to see if they're even going to offer it.
We're looking for the funding from them, right? And so, one, we know we don't have the space. So we're right now exploring community partnerships, and that's what a lot of districts have done. They're using outside vendors that are already providing pre-K for a lot of our parents. But we have to make sure the facilities meet the, the expectations.
So once we, you know, there, there are ways, and I know certain districts in the state have implemented pre-K very quickly, once you get told that you qualify. Now, the application's not due till the summer, right? It's like, it's over the summer.
So they'll, they will let us know on or about July 1st. So we're looking at the applica, it's a very extensive application. It's a five-year project. So we have to plan five years out with projections. And like I said, it's very, very involved. And then once they grant it, if we are granted the funding, we have 75 days to implement the phase one of the project.
We could conceivably get the grant over the summer and implement January 1st, or even sooner than that.
So that's what I, that, that's what I was going to ask. You mentioned '25, '26 school year, which I, I interpreted as being September. And in my head, those timelines don't work out considering that we don't know if we're going to have funding. We don't know where we're going to have, right?
Yeah. So again, as we collect our facts and work through this as a team to decide if this is what's in the best interest of our kids in our district, phase one would be working with our existing PEACH classes. So transitioning them to a full day, and then growing from there.
But it does happen very quickly. The districts have done it. They, if they award the grant, within months, they're, they're starting to expand the program. So it does move quickly.
And then one more, just one more comment. I think you said, in the best interest of the kids. I don't think too many people would, would hear that it's in the best interest of the kids to have it. It's the cost of it with everything else that's going on. And that's why the federal funding is so important.
So the funding for universal preschool would be through the grant?
Right. But, but that's why, I said, that's why the funding is so important. Without funding, it's hard.
We wouldn't be entertaining it if it wasn't an opportunity, right? So we got to avail ourselves of that money if it's out there.
Any other questions on budget? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into the referendum.
Since this is the second time we're going through this presentation, we just wanted to remind everyone of what we've discussed in the previous meetings. So Mr. Colavita's going to roll through this quickly, and we're going to, I'm going to tag team with you also, Mr. Colavita, to talk about what we're proposing. The board has not accepted our proposal yet to move, to move forward with this. So part of it, what we'll be talking about tonight, is seeking the board's permission to go out and actually get the final pricing on that. Is that correct, Mr. Colavita?
Right. So tonight, our, the, the items that are on the agenda are giving the board permission to have the architects submit drawings and get approvals from the Department of Education in preparation of a possible referendum. Doesn't commit the board to doing anything. It doesn't commit a one question, two questions, three questions. Doesn't commit us to do anything. All it's doing is, is submitting projects in the form that they would need to be submitted to the state, be then put on a question. The question will be finalized sometime in late spring, early summer, if the board decides that that's the way they're going to go ahead. There's been no amount discussed. There's been no type one question, two questions. Nothing is being decided tonight. The only thing that's being decided, again, is the submission of projects that need to be resubmitted from the last referendum, and some of the new projects that we have added.
So what's led to what you were going to see today is the Finance and Facility Committee of the Board asking my team and I to go back out and look at those projects again, to reexamine what we thought would, would lead to a catastrophic failure if we did not work on getting a repair plan in place, like post case. Listening to you all on tour, when I went on my listening tour, we've removed a couple of items. Some things have become more emergent and been added to the list. So what you'll see is the, that work that we've done, in addition to the board exploring what it would look like if we split the questions like some other neighboring districts have done. So there will be a proposal up here for three questions, but we'll talk through that a little bit once we get to it.
And Bob, one more comment I wanted to make in the direction of the world. The one thing that we are doing today with the vote is we're capping the possible projects that would be included if we were to go to, to November referendum.
Yes.
So if we're going to make November after today, you know,
Nothing's gonna get.
If the board approves, we can't add it. We can take away, but we can no longer.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. So again, kind of just went through all this, but we'll, we'll move ahead from there. So again, we have gone, we went out once in the fall. Board asked us to go back and, and remove some of the things that were hot-button items, and we all know what they were. That was the, the bathroom facility at the turf field and the auxiliary turf field have been removed from the discussion. Okay? Again, the reason why we need this, and Dr. Trese went through a lot of it, we simply just don't have the money in our general fund to attack detailed, detailed projects, comprehensive, complicated projects. Some folks might remember that years past, probably 12, 13 years prior, boards could do mini referenda every year at budget time. You could do $1 million, $2 million for the projects every year because the budget was voted upon. Every, every budget was voted on in April, and you could put capital projects in there. If the budget went down, you typically remove the capital project and the budget was approved. Since that vote was removed, the state took out that option to do small projects. You know, you can, you know, pick off projects each year. We don't have that guarantee anymore. The other reason why you want to go to referendum is the state will pay up to 40% of the cost. For us, it's somewhere in the area of 30, 30% of the cost. But it's better than nothing, you know? So you're getting some contribution from the state, money that we are already paying into. Taxpayers are already paying in to this fund. This is just the way we access it. We're just trying to get some of the money that you've spent in taxes back. Okay? Yeah, we talked about that, that some of the projects have been removed. They're up there again. We did have, again, cost, some cost escalation. Inflation is running rampant throughout the construction industry right now. Some of the projects that we had budgeted needed to be increased a little bit based upon not being able to do them for another year and a half down the road, should we get this approved. Pilot money update. There have been many meetings back and forth between the mayors of the three towns and the Board of Education. And we seem to have nearing an agreement with Hopewell Township to cover a significant, if not entire, portion of the Bear Tavern addition. We are being told that a proposal from them is, is forthcoming. We have not received it yet. But should that come to pass, we'll be able to restructure some of the plans that we have on our side.
Yes. So we're hoping if, if they do what they're saying that they're going to do, and they take care of Bear Tavern, not all of it, a good portion of it, that number would come off the question altogether. And that would just be handled by the township.
Okay. So we did talk about, that's been out there in the public, about separating the referendum into two pieces. One would be, the first part of the referendum would be projects that got funding, that were funded by the state, received state funding. And the other two, the other question would be the two additions, the one to Bear Tavern and the one to Tollgate, because those projects are ineligible for funding. At this point, again, the board has not made any decisions on that. But those are things that we're looking at. We could consider making other things on different questions. But that's all going to come over the next six months.
Bob, can you clarify? We've brought up in the past that if splitting questions, there's some priority that you have to have question one pass to have.
So there, there are several different ways to do it. You can make each question independent of one another. Princeton did that. They just put three, they put, I think, three questions out, and they were independent. So any of them could pass any which way. Some districts say question one has to pass before question two has to pass. So we determine that.
Yes.
Okay.
So both of the projects are really about maintaining our building integrity. They're all HVAC improvements. These are very large projects, multimillion-dollar projects, as well as some of the roofing that needs to be done. Large portions of the roof were done all, all at once, but not the whole roof. So the ones that are on the high school are not the ones that were done in the first referendum. These are other roof surfaces that were not done in the first one. Enhancing and creating more space for our students to make sure that we're compliant for any preschool expansion that might come that we can house. And also making sure that our kindergarten bathrooms, our kindergarten rooms have the appropriate regulations. Inside improvements like paving, drainage, entrance enhancements, because we have some trimming hazards, some paving issues going on outside of the building. But mo, all of these have to do with integrity of our buildings and just maintenance that needs to happen that have not happened over the years. And it's gotten to the point where these are major, major projects now. So not, no flood. These are all real integral projects.
Again, based upon the, with the original plan from last month, 99% of the projects on that, that question, first question was all that critical infrastructure, 99% funded. I think there was a small portion of the paving that was not covered on that.
And I think it's important to underscore that when you say drainage and pavement that hasn't been done over time, we've also had significant failures in some of these areas. So it's not simply that it's been a while since we've touched this surface. It, we've had failures and
We're touching, patching and fixing, but, for example, the drainage problem behind Stony Brook needs a major redesign. And we had some parents that were very gracious and did a survey and, and talked to us about some of the engineering that would take place. It's a major project. But when that flooding happens, we have to do repairs to the floor. We have to repair the building. That is very damaging, and we know the problem exists. We don't have the funds to really make that happen. So some folks say, well, well, isn't it an emergency when this happens over here? Like Bear Tavern, for example, had to evacuate because of eight, there was a unit that was smoking in the ceiling, right? Well, Stony Brook had the same thing. Hopewell Elementary didn't have heat or air functioning for months at a time. There's little issues like this, and bigger issues like this in almost every building.
Again, 33% of these projects would be covered by the state of New Jersey.
So question two, we've split between those, those major infrastructure projects. And then the separate ones are the additions. The one to Tollgate, to get the kids out of those outside units, which I, for security reasons, I want everyone in the building. And also, just the integrity of keeping those heated and cooled is, is very difficult because they're, they're outside units. And some of them, so I've had parents saying, I was in those, those, you know, little houses. So they need to, they need to go. Tollgate in particular, has a, there's a problem accessing the building all the way around for the first responders. So when we take those, when we, if we could build the addition on Tollgate and make more room inside the building, which they need, those would go away, and that would allow first responders to have access all the way around the building, and also provide parking for people so that they can park at Tollgate instead of along the, down the street and along the sides there. So it would, the, the getting rid of those buildings would allow us to do some other things to make the building more accessible. And then the, the addition at Bear Tavern. This came out of our, our talking tour with folks. They were saying, maybe you should separate those out into separate questions. The board entertain that and put these here. I'm going to say this. If the township says they're going to pay for Bear Tavern, I'm going to feel very uncomfortable leaving Tollgate as a separate question. So I would really recommend to the board, and you will make that decision later, because we're still hashing this over, hashing this out, that we're not leave a school by itself, and that it becomes a large, part of a larger question, one question.
Yep.
Right. So
99% of the project
It's not a third of the projects that are covered. It's, we expect about a third of the total cost of all of those projects.
Correct. Again, they don't pay it upfront. They pay it as a reimbursement to the debt service payment that has to happen.
Right. It's just that you said a third of the projects are covered.
Right. That's different.
It's a third of the cost.
Right. Again, some folks have asked us, you know, why didn't you take care of these projects before they, that these kinds of things happened? Again, the sheer cost of a lot of these projects, we just didn't have that kind of money. We, we've picked off projects as we can. We've picked off portions of roofs. We've picked off paving. We've picked off some HVAC work over the years. Sometimes projects just get to be too large for us to handle in our, in our regular budget.
Roughly, how much money did we spend in the last two or three years on the projects that we were kind of picking off, off the top of your head, Bob? Come on.
Tom's thinking out there. How much, Tom?
We haven't been not doing anything. It's just
Is that inclusive of the rod grants where we had reimbursement?
Yeah. That project happened.
That's the boilers at the high school, which we got a rod grant for. But we also did the boilers at Bear Tavern, the boilers at Timberlane. We did all the sewer projects at Timberlane.
We took the fire alarm system.
The fire alarm system at Stony Brook and did that this past summer. So there were numerous things that we've continued to do and work on out of, out of just capital money.
And in addition to the capital monies that you're repairing things, there's also constant maintenance to the buildings, right? We had, we have tons of dead trees that we've had to remove. There have been paving jobs. There have been paving jobs. There's been lots of plumbing work that we've done. Luckily, we have inside people that can do that and save us some money. Just even just changing out light bulbs and making sure you're changing out ceiling. I mean, there's maintenance that happens beyond the capital projects.
Yeah, we've changed about 4,000 light bulbs out to LED this year alone. So that lowers our cost on electric. And we happened to get those light bulbs at a very good price because they were through a PSENG grant. So they were only paying a dollar a piece for them.
Thank you.
Here's just some examples of the projects that we've done with either district folks or with contractors outside. This is what Alex was looking for before my computer died.
Yes, and I know that folks, that one of the bones of contention was this turf field at CHS that we replaced. When this turf field was purchased, the BA understood, and so did the director of our sports, Mr. Becker, they knew that they would have to replace this. They saved money to replace the turf field. So it's not like we pulled money out of a budget that was already strained. They saved because they knew this repair had to come. As well as the tennis courts. These things do need to be resurfaced every, so often. And school districts need to plan for that, and they did plan for those changes.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I'm going to look the expert.
There are a lot of codes that you have to stay compliant with. The structure of the building itself, the integrity of it. Follow specific codes. Schools are classes, Class E, which is completely different than your home. Everything you do has just become so much more costly. For instance, on HVAC equipment, everything is now what they call addressable. So if a fan goes, and if, say, the fan goes in your heater at home, the blower motor, you just have the company come out, they replace the blower motor, it's done. If the fan goes or the blower motor in this new equipment, it has to be programmed. So we can put the fan in, but the unit won't run until the manufacturer comes out and puts their computer on it and programs it. And that's an extra couple thousand dollars just to have them do that. So all these hidden costs. Different versions of equipment get sold. We have Florida heat pumps at Stony Brook. Florida heat pumps sold to Bosch. Bosch is not exactly as cooperative as could be possible when it comes to selling the same components. And the same thing with Panasonic units that we have at Bear Tavern. They've been sold to Sanyo now. Panasonic is still in the heat pump business, but not doing what that type is, which is a VRF. So you have to go through Sanyo and meeting these different, matching the numbers and finding the same components, and they've increased the prices. A compressor that used to cost $1,200 three years ago is over $3,000 now.
One of the big things that is different from home versus public construction is we have to pay prevailing wage, which also drives up the cost.
For anything over $2,000 worth of work.
Answer it, there you go. So just some of the things that are going to be done at the high school. Approximately almost $10 million worth of projects. Again, the remaining roof areas that were not addressed during the previous referendum. Those two areas in blue to the far right, those are the newer areas of Central High School. Those buildings, those additions were put on in the 2000 referendum. That of the PAC and that new gym, which is not the new gym anymore. It's really the older gym. But those roofs have expired. The lifetime of those roofs have expired and they need to be replaced. But the remainder of those other roofs were done at the previous referendum. The 400 wing, which is to the far left, the kind of diagonal piece, that was the 97 referendum. That's the original heating system that was installed when that addition was put on. So again, well beyond its useful life. Again, paving restoration for the solar parking lot. The student lot with the solar panels over it needs to be redone. And we've kind of delayed that for a considerable amount of time there. Moving on to Timberlane. Again, a decent portion of the roof back there. The other roofs were done prior, but that needs to be done. There's also an incredible amount of HVAC work that needs to be done there as well, as well as replacing the chiller in that place. And air conditioning, the last place in the district that isn't the auxiliary gym at Timberlane will be addressed.
And on that HVAC work that has to be done at Timberlane, over this past month and a half, when we had the cold spells, we lost three coils in classrooms at Timberlane.
And when that happened, this team to class, I remember we lost principal there. And you lose a lot of stuff in the class as well.
Yes. And then you can't use that room until we get that coil back.
And then the last part of the Timberlane is just to revamp the front entrance. It's not, this is not a beautification project. It is a pretty serious trip hazard out there with the concrete that has deteriorated over the past 20, 25 years there. That's really what's being done out there. And in addition to the facade wall is starting to crumble down. We've had to do some maintenance up there, had to remove some of the block that's up at the top of that facade. It just, it needs to, it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, at the top, that's crumbling. Last summer, I got up on a lift and pulled all the loose blocks off, and we'll have to do that again this year.
That's Timberlane. Bear Tavern, we did a walkthrough through there. We need, again, some, this is where we have a well. You may recall, we had an issue with the Timberlane well last fall, not this, two falls ago, where we lost water for a day, almost a day and a half. We were very fortunate to be able, that Tom found a spare pump sitting on a shelf down in South Jersey that they were able to ship up to us. And we had to, we had an emergency repair to that well. We could have been weeks without water to that well. So the projects at Bear Tavern and also Timberlane are auxiliary wells so that in case one fails, the other one will be operational. We have some work that we need to do to the sewer pumping station there. We run a very, what's called a very small water system at Bear Tavern, and we are not on public water or sewer. We maintain our own basically sewage treatment plant that pumps into a forced main that we manage that goes into the public water system further down Bear Tavern Road.
Yeah, about two miles down Bear Tavern Road, we own the line.
Okay. Some, so just some things that needed to be done at these places. A good portion of the roofing over the pod areas also needs to be taken care of, as well as the HVAC system that manages the front of the building, the main office, and I believe into the cafeteria.
Yes, the cafeteria, the media center, the main office. And then we're also looking at replacing the heat pumps that currently run to assist with heating and actually provide the cooling in the pods. That system's about 15 years old. As I said, Panasonic has sold out to Sanyo, and it's just inefficient. We can't, we can't make it work anymore.
Right, and then the last part of that, you can see in the upper right-hand corner with the arrow, a lot of the storefront work in front of that building has, the steel has rotted away, deteriorated away over the, over the past 50-plus years of that building. You know, we've gotten some questions from public members about why we let it get to that point. When Tom and I both got here, and I got here a little bit before him, but that was already beyond the point of repair. We've been, you know, making do with it over time. But what causes that is the rock salt that gets tossed onto the concrete out there. And years before, we don't do it anymore in this district. We've gone to green cleaning chemicals. But the floor compounds that were used to polish and clean the floors were caustic. And it caused the rusting of those metal panels.
Not only that, but the construction methods that were used in the early 1960s, where they placed steel directly on the concrete slab. That's no longer done. So that in itself started corrosion.
This may be a stupid question, or maybe it's, Bob. Why do we own a sewer line two miles down the road?
I don't know why it was built that way. But when Bear Tavern was built in the 60s, the population around here probably was, you know, a fair fraction of what it is now. And to get it built, they said you need to maintain your own water system. I don't, I don't know.
Is that something that we can explore with the county to remedy or somehow? It just seems.
For years, we have tried to get both Timberlane and Bear Tavern on public water, and it's not met with much enthusiasm.
And I don't believe, Elsa, the Sewer Authority comes all the way up to Bear Tavern. I think most of the houses around there are still on septic.
So we have looked at Timberlane to get that on public water, but it's, you know, there's very little to no interest in doing that. Not on our part. Some work at Hopewell Elementary. Again, a lot of the, also the other buildings, their interior doors. Folks were at Tollgate and Bear Tavern last week. There's some issues with interior doors. We are looking to get the most up-to-date fire-rated doors. The doors are secure. We have, all of our doors in a lockdown situation are secure. These are more fire-ready doors that provide an increased level of security and safety in case of a fire. Again, more of that. So again, some kindergarten rooms. We talked about improving some of our spaces for our youngest students. Some, we have some, two rooms at Hopewell that need to have a proper restroom for those students. Again, more roofing there as well. And a complete rework of the primary HVAC wing. This is a project, Tom, what was the cost of that? And around this $5 million area?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Again, it's just, it's a very comprehensive HVAC project, and the things just cost more than they ever have.
And again, the system that's in place is no longer supported by the manufacturer.
Again, Stony Brook, our newest school at 20-plus years old. The original roofing there is past its useful life, and that's going to be done. In addition, this is something that I learned. I wasn't here when we first built Stony Brook, but Stony Brook was built with a geothermal well system that provided both heating and cooling. Over the past 22 years, and this is common, that the cold water, the heat works fine. It's the cold water can't get as cold anymore to maintain the cooling portion of it. So we are proposing an auxiliary chiller to help on the hottest of days. And that building is pretty much used year-round. So we feel that that's necessary to keep the cooling capability of that building up to par. And as Dr. Treese mentioned, there is a drainage issue off to the, with a smaller playground area is that we're trying to address, to run the water properly away from the building.
I just want to clarify, on the, for Stony Brook's geothermal, it's not that the equipment is the issue. It's the ground temperature has changed significantly.
The ground has warmed.
Yeah, so it's.
From 22 years of having the wells in the ground, it actually has warmed the ground temperature from what's normally around 55 to about 65 to 70 degrees. It's really helpful on the heating side, but it's very detrimental on the cooling side.
So we're adding the chilling to help.
Yeah, and you do have to understand, too, the equipment there is 22 years old and fails constantly. But we continue to fix it, so.
And Tollgate, you can see a vast, the vast majority of the entire Tollgate building is having a roof replaced. Again, more HVAC work on the third floor. One, and again, a major electrical upgrade to that building. We need to replace the entire electrical switchgear in that facility. And the other, the final project there again is the additional space that will be provided on the blacktop area. Providing for an additional eight classrooms that will be designed to handle both preschool and kindergarten classrooms, size-wise, but they can be used for anything. And as we learned tonight, that Principal Lori is having some issues with, you know, we don't have all of our special area classes. Some of them are on a cart, and they have limited space over there for their students. And the thing that I've pushed for, always wanted since I got here, was to close those trailers on the side of that building. And this just gives you an overview of where that Bear Tavern addition would go. The trailers at Bear Tavern will remain. They're functional for office space, not so much. And we can't use them, actually. We found out we can't use them for our preschool program any longer. Expected, what, 2027? They'll no longer be eligible to be used for our preschool program. Kind of what it's going to look like. And then Tollgate, similar, with a passageway from the back of the building to an addition off the back. The dotted red area is where the current trailers are. Those will be removed, and there'll be additional head-on parking there to eliminate some of the congestion on South Main Street. Also gives the first responders the ability to circle the building, which they don't have right now.
For the preschool requirements changing, is that based on the square footage per student guidelines? Or what's the reason why the building won't be eligible for it anymore?
Yeah. This has nothing to do with preschool expansion, but it has to do with just preschool in general has to be in, it's got to be inside the rest of the building. So if we were not to do this, we'd have to find a way to run our PEACH program within the building. Kind of gives you an idea of Tollgate's addition. There's also a piece of the Tollgate renovation that will add another bathroom for staff, I believe, the staff bathroom. Put a bathroom in the nurses' suite. And also provide some storage space for the gym. It doesn't exist right now. Most of the storage at the gym is on the stage, which is not, it's not the best situation for the instructor. Okay? And a summary of the costs that we're looking at. Now, the question one, remember, those were the projects that had, will receive funding from the state. And question two was for the two additions, the addition at Bear Tavern and the addition at Tollgate. Again, question one and two are the way it was, where we, the finance committee and board had decided to look at. Nothing has been decided as of today. There'll be a lot of discussion over the next, you know, three to four to five months on where we wind up. And again, it just shows the eligibility of the projects. Okay? And then the cost of the two questions themselves. Pretty much kind of takes us through it. Any other questions from board members?
Hi. I guess this is on, not really. These are really loud today, aren't they? Or is this just this one? Okay, they're upgraded. Okay, sorry, I'm going to step back here a little bit. So just not really a question, it's more of a comment. I think that having been through it, first of all, great update on the pilot. Hopefully, you know, everything comes into, what's the word I'm looking for here? Everything's decided and that's all, you know, settled before we actually have to sort of really make, you know, the true decisions here. I would still say the same thing I said at the last meeting, that I think maybe we need to sort of look at the questions. I think two questions is a great idea. I think the student safety issues that we're seeing, bringing those kids indoors, to me, I think that's probably a higher priority than some of the other things that I'm seeing in question one, regardless of the percentage of state funding. So I would just urge, you know, as we're sort of looking at how we're breaking down the questions, I was just at Tollgate tonight, I know a few of us were, you know, those kids, if we could figure out a way to, that's probably the most pressing need to me, is that we have those kids inside. And I would hate for that to be the second question, as Dr. Treese mentioned. I just wanted to, first of all, great update. Thanks, Bob, for doing that. Thanks for your work on the pilot issue. That's. Thanks for your work on the pilot issue, that's obviously huge. And then, you know, I would just urge just, you know, to sort of, if possible, consider, you know, how we're ordering the different projects.
Anita brought something up, kind of, we forgot about it a little bit, but at the last Bear Tavern meeting, there was a question come from the public about why there is an additional parking at Bear Tavern. We did look into it. We had walked the grounds, Tom and I walked the grounds with the architect and engineer. We kind of determined that there's only one real feasible place to put additional parking, and it would be towards the backside of the building, behind where the trailers are now. We could probably get another 73 to 74 spaces in there. Believe it or not, the cost of doing that will be about $1.2 million. We are submitting that project in case the board decides that they want to go ahead with it. Again, doesn't mean we're going to do it, it just means that we're getting the approvals necessary from the state, should the board wish to go ahead with that. But the other parts, the other areas of the site were either too far away, if we were going to put it back beyond the addition, or near the playground, where students would have to cross that area to get to the playground. And we didn't feel that we'd be able to get enough cars into that area than just extending the parking lot that's already on the side. But it's possible, but as we thought, the code, the construction code is putting, and putting down, not, what is it, non-impervious service is very difficult, and it should be, but we would have to get through both Hopewell Township, but also the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. Would have to take a hard look at that, which is what drives off, the soft cost may drive some of the cost of that up as well, the regulatory oversight to add that additional space.
A hard surface, or something like what we have in the back, which is the mesh. So that price is the hard surface, I'm assuming?
So we looked in, we also looked into the matting. If we put the matting down, as you can see back here, in the winter, you're still going to wind up with a decent amount of mud that you'd have to deal with. In addition to, it would take a lot of that area where you put the mesh, it would make that, you couldn't use it for sports anymore. Competitive sports anyway, you could have recess on and things like that, but to have, and it's used by some of our soccer and lacrosse programs, it would no longer, because of the mesh, your cleats would get twisted up into the grid, which would make it, you know, a safety hazard to use that.
I just had a quick comment about that, and then a question. I think with regards to the comment, I think we just want to be really cautious adding additional projects at this time. I think what we heard from the public, although I am very sympathetic to the parking issue, is that they want less, not more. So I think just as a board, we should really be thoughtful about any additional projects that get added. I think the second thing that I'll just ask, which is a question really, is about the state contribution. So the 33% state contribution for some of these projects, given the federal and state funding context right now, is it possible that in the upcoming fiscal years, that portion could be reduced? Or is that something that's going to stay static?
Good question. It's, so, it's called debt service aid, okay? And it comes out with the governor's financial package. Could it be eliminated? Yes, it could be. It hasn't over the years, it's always been funded. But the governor needs to make appropriations for it annually. He had a catastrophic issue with the budget, he could reduce it, he could eliminate it, but historically, he has not done that, they have not done that.
And if we were to lock it in now-ish with the referendum, would we be grandfathered in?
No, debt service aid is subject to annual appropriations.
Okay, thank you.
Just for my clarification, so the parking for Bear Tavern is in that number?
No.
No.
No, it was, we were asked, we were asked a question, we did a back-of-the-napkin walkthrough and estimate that the architect gave us, you know, we went, met with an engineer, and he said, you know, given this, this, that, square foot.
But it is on the list of projects that you want us to approve?
Right, but it's not in the numbers, it's not in any of these numbers.
And just because you approve it, doesn't mean you have to do it.
It was asked of us, and we said, you know, in its infancy, if the board decided that they wanted to go ahead with it, we'd have that ability to do it. Or if we decided to take it on on our own, if we were able to save money for it down the road, project would be approved and we could go ahead with it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tom. All right, we're going to go ahead and move.
It's part of the consent agenda. So it's item, Pam knows, because she told me, I messed it up twice today. It's item eight, G8. So once you, once we do the, unless you want to pull it from the consent agenda, but, you know, if we go ahead and pass it, we will work through the, with the architect and engineers to submit to the state.
Everybody clear about that?
If you have any questions as to what you're doing, what you're being asked to do.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move into our first public comment section, and I am going to just share, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality, and in response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comments now open, and I have a timekeeper over here. Okay, public comments now open, the, at the podium.
Hello, Cheryl Sarankowski, Nine Hunter's Ridge Drive in Hopewell Township. I just had two questions slash comments. First, I just wanted to give my appreciation for looking at the parking at Bear Tavern. I did hear you mention about having, it has a priority for Tollgate to get parking, and mentioning them parking on the street, but I believe that we have sidewalks here in Pennington, where there's no sidewalks at Bear Tavern. So that could be probably a more expensive option, but even if there were sidewalks on the road, I think that that would be really beneficial. Second off, I wanted to speak a little bit to the Bear Tavern addition, so I'm excited to hear that pilot may help with that addition, but I'm a little concerned with how the classrooms are being allocated. If pilot is supposed to help for all of the new homes that are being added, and we're allocating 60% of those classrooms to pre-K, we're only really adding in four additional classrooms to help with that expanded house, housing that we have here. So I understand, my son is now in pre-K, I understand wanting to move them out of the trailers, and I think that's a great idea, but I'm really concerned that we're not actually addressing the issue we have here with the rising enrollment we have in the elementary schools. And to offer a suggestion, it might be a good idea, if we can get that pilot approved, that we just change that second question in the referendum to account for the preschool rooms, and maybe that's, I know last time you talked about it in addition on the second story, and maybe that's where we can keep that second question, but have it to be specifically for those preschool rooms. That is all I had to say, thank you very much.
Hello, I'll find it when I'm done. Allison Larcy, Five State Park Drive in Titusville here. So I have a few questions, just for clarification, what does administrative restructuring mean? Is the district redistricting going to occur regardless of whether or not the referendum passes? Again, given that there is, there are housing developments in each of the municipalities going in? Do you cap the rate for hiring new teachers? I know you mentioned, when we have the veteran teachers retiring, we can often hire newer teachers at a lower salary, but do we restrict the district and kind of force their hand to hire inexperienced teachers rather than taking the best possible candidate? The Universal Pre-K survey asked if we, it really was asking if we're going to use it, but not necessarily for community support. I for one would love to propose my support for Universal Pre-K. My kids are aged out, I won't make use of that, but I would like to support that endeavor. Glad to hear the update with the pilot. Also want to make sure that the borough councils are clear in what's happening with the litigations, that that money can be released. And depending on when that money is available, what happens with that referendum? So can we reallocate more money to perhaps get rid of the trailers at Bear Tavern, or add additional classrooms or parking, things like that? So if we, because we don't know when that money is going to become available, if it's not there, and then the referendum goes forward, the town says yes, hopefully, and then we get the funds, then we get the pilot money, do we get to do a happy dance and do lots of things, or are we doing something else? Kind of what's the plan? Should that money, you know, kind of be held up a little bit longer, and we don't know what happens when it comes through? So, thank you.
Good evening, Lauren Kavanaugh, Two Tim Cack Lane, Hopewell Township. I would like to share something that happened to my son a couple weeks ago. My son walked into the bathroom at Timberlane only to find a vulgar, offensive symbol of hate scrawled on the stall door. Displaying this symbol is not only offensive, but also considered a hate crime in the eyes of the law, and for good reason. I'm grateful that my son had a trusted adult at Timberlane with whom he could work through his initial reactions. However, we found out later that the proper protocol for handling hate speech was not carried out until days later, because the trusted adult reported it to a school administrator who was unfortunately not aware of the protocol. Beyond this one incident, I'm personally aware of numerous instances where students have been confronted with hate speech based on the color of their skin, their religion, their disabilities, and their gender identities. This has to stop. Unfortunately, incidents of bias are on the rise in our area. According to a report from the New Jersey Office of the Attorney General, in 2022, Mercer County had the second highest rate among all counties statewide of reported bias incidents per 10,000 residents, at a rate of about four incidents per 10,000 residents. And by comparison, Essex County had only about one incident per 10,000 residents. And incident rates are rising. I looked at the database from which this report was from, and saw that the rate of bias incidents increased in our county since 2022, from 172 incidents to 204 in 2024. And of course, those are just the incidents that have been reported. While we can't address all of what's happening in Mercer County, I know we can do better in our community here. I have several requests of the administration. I ask that all vice principals and other administrators receive updated and expanded training so that they are prepared to handle these incidents in the future. Of the board, I ask you to look into what other education we can be giving the children so that we can be better informed about the impact of hate speech and hate symbols on the school community, know how to react when encountering such incidents, and learn to be more open to people that aren't like them, and mindful of the big impact that even small acts of kindness and courage can make. And of the community, I ask that we all explore ways of stopping hate crime, increasing public awareness and compassion, not just in our schools, but in our community areas, places of worship, parks, and so on. I'd like to hear from the board and administrators about how they've addressed these issues in the past, and I'd like to hear the plan to increase their focus on this so that incidents decrease and they are appropriately handled in the future. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Will Carter, 41st Street, here in Pennington. Last time we were here, we spoke a little bit about Smart Pass, and this is still an issue in our schools, but there's a few, I guess rumors going around and concerns that something known as a yonder pouch might be being implemented into our high school as well. And this is far more of a concern than Smart Pass, there's Smart Passes, but we also have to address Smart Passes as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, for those that are unaware, the yonder pouches have been implemented, I believe just in middle school at this time. And what they have done is, you, every child has received a pouch, and to my understanding, you walk into the school building, you put your phone in the pouch, they are locked. I believe only the administrators have keys to these, I'm not sure of that off the top of my head, but then you have your phone on you, but you cannot use it throughout the day. High school students, for many reasons that I have written down, but, you know, we could talk about this at an upcoming meeting, are very worried about the potential of this to come over to the high school, and we'd like to hear what your plans are. Yeah, I think that high school students just want to know, because I feel like there hasn't been a lot of communication to students at the high school, whether or not it is true that these are coming, and what it means for the students if they do come. And we also would advise that you do not implement these at the high school, because we think that they are a security and privacy, or not privacy, security concern for all the students. The second thing that I'd like to bring up today, it was talked earlier about world languages in the budget, and I'd just like a little bit of clarification in that language. To my understanding, every high school student is required to take five credits of world language education, and when the language up on the board says elimination of the world language course of study, that raises some concerns for me and other members of Hopewell Township. Thank you.
Kate Hamm, Hopewell Township, just a few remarks and questions this evening. I am encouraged by viewing the attendance of community members at the school tours and board meetings these last two months. While looking through the current list, I see five of the six schools will be addressed between January and May. Is there a plan to hold the same tour and board meeting at the high school? On tonight's tour, it was mentioned that the superintendent would be creating a communication committee. I would like to ask a couple of questions. Has it yet been determined the purpose and mission of this committee? What is the projected size of the committee? And for parents who are interested in participating in this committee, how would they go about expressing their interest? While I heard the brief discussion and updates surrounding the potential of Universal Pre-K, I would like to offer this. I publicly affirm that I support Universal Pre-K if it is done with appropriate fiscal responsibility. The grant as it stands does not fully fund the Universal Pre-K program, the grant is to support, and the district must utilize their budget to accommodate. The grant also has very specific criteria and might potentially alter current programming here in Hopewell Valley. Utilizing present community preschool programs would require them to meet the state of New Jersey guidelines in terms of square footage, staff requirements, curriculum, et cetera, and potentially negatively impact local businesses. Being titled as universal would mean access to all. Being titled as universal would mean access to all eligible students, which should include transportation, another large financial commitment. While you speak to other districts who have undertaken this grant, it's important to note that you will get a very different perspective from an administrator versus staff who is boots on the ground. Additionally, the grant is not a guarantee, and with new leadership coming to New Jersey in 2026, another decision could be made about the grant. At this time, you're asking the community to undertake other sizable financial commitments with a referendum? It's imperative to make a fiscally responsible decision.
Good evening. Kate Lyons, I live at 77 Harberton, Mount Airy, Lambertville, but Hopewell Township. And last time, last month at the meeting, it, there was a significant discussion of classroom size. And I was left a little bit confused as to whether this is an inevitability. It seems the messaging is class sizes will go up. Now, that was a concern across the board from the members of the community. And it was certainly, I know it's listed as a consequence, the referendum does not pass. But the question I have is, is class size going to go up no matter what? What can we do to limit the increase in the class size, to stop the increase in the class size? Is that even possible, or is it a fool's errand? I know that in addition to the class sizes going up, the para-professionals are also being eliminated. What can we do about that? Is that also an inevitability regardless of whether the referendum passes or not? Are we just looking at class sizes going up and up and up without proper support? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. Erin Groger, 26, Dublin Road, Pennington. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I'm sorry. So I just wanted to report back, after the last board meeting, I did attend the Hopewell Township Committee meeting via Zoom. Because I want to support and work together. So I wanted to report back what was told to me at the meeting. I was told in regards to the pilot that the money cannot be released because the court case is in the appellate court. I don't know if something different happened from when I went. So my question is, is there an update from what I was told? Has the court case been settled? Or is it still in the appellate court? And the money cannot be given to the district? That's what I was told from the committee, so I'm here to ask, what is that communication between the district and the township? My second question is one that I asked in the second public comment, but it didn't get answered last time. And that is regarding the developments that have been built that are going to Bear Tavern. My question was, I know right now there was a lot of talk about sending students, rerouting students to Stony Brook and wherever else, which very appreciative of if that's happening. But my question then is, that seems like it would cost more for busing if we're just rerouting specific students from specific developments. So my question is, has there been discussion, will there be discussion about specific developments being rerouted? Instead of just specific students? For example, the ShopRite development is quite close to Stony Brook, it goes to Bear Tavern. And there is also the new development on Scotch Road that goes to Bear Tavern. So have there been conversations, is that a possibility? And if it's not, why is that not a possibility? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Clabro, 10 Nathaniel Green Drive, and I'm in Titusville. I just have, again, it's based on the pilot program, some questions related to that. I think that if I understood correctly from what we were discussing, that there was a possible implementation January 1 of next year. So if Peach students are already in those classrooms, what would transportation look like to the potential new locations or outside vendors that we were talking about? What that structuring would look like within the classrooms? Especially those that would be turning from half-year to mid-year staffing for those rooms as well? And what that would look like for the students and the teacher population and the expectations of the teachers in that first phase? So just looking for some clarification on what our expectations are and what the implementation of that would look like. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, we'll move on to the list, kind of going down the list.
I'm going to go backwards, so I don't miss one this time, but we want to start with the preschool questions?
I appreciate all your preschool questions. Like I said, right now we are in fact finding. And we want to do this the right way if we're going to do it. So it's a five-year process. If we are, if they are offering the grant and if, number one, we are awarded the grant. But what we would probably do is if we decide to apply for the grant and they offer it, we would definitely communicate to our parents of our Peach students that it would, it would probably, they will most likely transition into a full day. All of the teachers through Universal Preschool have to be certified through the New Jersey Department of Ed. And we would have to follow those guidelines. The curriculum would be very similar in that we're using one of the three curriculums that are, that the Department of Ed requires that we adhere to. So we would either stay with the current curriculum or we would choose one of the other two that our New Jersey Department of Ed approved and accredited. As far as the other logistics, I don't have those answers yet, but I will. You know, if we decide, if they offer the grant, we decide we're going to apply for it, we'll have a parent meeting, we will sit down, we will talk through everything.
But we do have to provide busing.
Oh yeah, transportation does have to happen, yeah, okay.
So again, if this is not something that the state can help us fund and well fund, this is not something we can go down the road of. So we'll be in communication with you. I understand Mrs. Hamm's concern, that's the reason why I didn't go after this two or three years ago when it started. I wanted to make sure that I saw other districts go through the process and that it was working the way it was supposed to work before we even entertained this.
Yeah, and I think Ms. Hamm asked about, or requested that we speak not just with administrators. Just for the record, I am actually meeting with teachers and I am meeting with administrators as well. Because I, you know, having been a teacher for a really long time, I value everything that they say and do because they're in the classrooms every day with our kids. So thank you.
The next one was about the township meeting and the talking about the lawsuit and they're waiting for a decision. The mayors have been in negotiation after meeting with us and trying to come to an agreement where they agree on one, paying for the Bear Tavern addition, and then there's some other things that they're negotiating. They've also, the township has reached out to us within the last week, kind of exploring some other ways that they can bond out the money alongside the pilot, not wait for the pilot money, but to do, like, is there another opportunity to bond the money out? To remove this as a question for us. So they're looking at a couple of options to see if they can find the funding. That would take that question off and alleviate the tax impact and the cost of the referendum to you. So that's where we are right now with that. And as soon as we know, and we ask them to try to get us to answer sooner than later, so we can answer that to you. Hopefully by the end of the month, but we'll see what their negotiation brings moving forward. Did you want to add anything there?
Yeah, I think the clear point or the clear question was, this is what they're saying in this setting and what they're telling us. So the communication is ongoing, there is obviously communication that happened just this week. But we won't feel confident until we've got that's a legal, we've got it legally clarified for us. So continue. If they're apprehensive in telling you straight out that that's what they're planning to do, then I would take them at their word and we'll continue to press on our side. But our information is every week as we go. And we're continuing to apply whatever pressure we can, but obviously with limited, you know, yeah, we have little leverage, but we continue to have the conversation. And we continue to bring them to the table together because it's for them to work out.
And detailed information has been requested from me to give to them. So they can formulate their plan.
So redistricting is happening right now, we are already rerouting some kids to Stony Brook. We have already had to add some routes, yes, additional kids will mean more routes. Next year, there will be a redistricting. We're going to try to affect new parents first. But there's some streets in some of the existing developments, even beyond ShopRite, that we're having problems navigating with our current routes. So we're going to be probably rerouting certain streets and certain communities over to Stony Brook. Sending kids all the way over to Hopewell is not feasible and Tollgate's teeny tiny, right? So that's not going to happen. So those are the two schools that we're going to have to really look at for redistricting between those two and balancing out those numbers. So yes, we would probably have to add routes, but we're going to try to minimize that as much as possible. And we're working very closely with transportation to look at those routes. Class size will be going up for everyone regardless of if the referendum passes because that still doesn't address the lack of funding that we're receiving on the other side for our fixed costs. So that, what does that mean? Class sizes of 17, 16, on average 18 are going to go up to the mid-20s, and I'm going to try to hold there. Para-professionals are linked to IEPs largely, meaning students with special needs. These roles are hard to fill as it is. So we've kind of had shared kindergarten para-professionals. If a class size at a kindergarten level hits a larger size, you need to add a kindergarten para. So we understand that. Hopefully we can find folks to fill these positions, that's been a struggle. So the paras are probably, the numbers are probably not going to go down vastly because many of those are linked to student IEPs and we're by law obligated to have those there. So again, the mid-20s is what we're really looking for, and I don't plan on going any larger than that. And hopefully I won't need to go much larger than that and the funding is addressed.
I just want to clarify a point. So as we go through the year, there is not going to be a redistrict. That's just not feasible to disrupt someone who's already in the district. But each season, we look anew at what the distribution of children look like. And again, as much as we know ahead, we're going to communicate to the community, but we're not disrupting in the middle, which I think makes sense to folks, but I just want to clarify.
There are new folks going in that we've already started, Mr. Billy and Ms. Jean Freddie already talk, and there's class sizes that were hitting too large and we sent them over to Stony Brook now.
Because they're new students.
They're new, yes.
The new students will be the ones that will move around during the year, but not at...
I think the question was, given that there are some students from the ShopRite neighborhood that are going to Bear Tavern now, next year they will be going to Stony Brook, we're going to take that whole neighborhood and ship it to Stony.
That's right.
So.
Okay, so we had our high school.
One more thing while you're on the question, right? There was a part of the question, yes, class sizes are going up no matter what. What would be the impact of the referendum not passing on the class sizes?
Well, it's not a direct correlation, but if we have, if we have major projects that we can't fund, and these are bad projects that are closing buildings or causing a catastrophic failure, yes, you're going to have to find the money somewhere. So will the district be faced with a situation where they have to reduce class sizes? I mean, increase class sizes even more? Districts have had to do that. So, you know, I don't know that that...
So the mid-20s is assuming the referendum passes.
Right.
And if it doesn't pass, stuff starts to happen regardless.
I can't predict how bad that will get, yes, thank you. So I think I got all those. So the next one was, the high school students asked about the yonder pouches. I don't know what we're going to be doing with the high school at yonder pouches. Right now, we're focusing on the middle school. The middle school yonder pouches were funded through Title IV money. Title IV money is money that's allocated to school districts. It comes from federal funds, it's meant to be used on school climate, improving school climate, reducing the bullying situations that are happening in schools. We spend that money on our air dog training. We have possibly maybe the sixth cohort of that. We're working with the HVEF and some other organizations to see how we're going to continue to fund some of these things. But the money that paid for those pouches was that money. It cannot be used for anything else. So when, so folks are saying, well, why are you spending money on the yonder patches with costs about $30 a kid? To tool out the middle school and get it ready for the removal sites and all of that, and the training and the setup for the yonder patches, cost us, and I'm rounding up, to about 30 grand. But moving forward, it's $30 a pouch for each kid. We purchased enough for kids to lose them, to have all the issues that middle schoolers have. So we have a little kitty so that we don't have to hit a parent right away if a kid loses one or two, because that's going to happen. But the high school, we don't know how we're going to be able to fund that. So right now, we're focusing on the middle school. If Ms. Riley decides to go that, explore that route, she will have that discussion with high schoolers, just like Mr. Turnbull worked with his middle school students as well. But right now, the focus is on the middle school. So I don't have any plans for that right now, but certainly you all will be part of that conversation if we go down that road.
And I think the conversation that, I'm just going to kind of tie it to, you pointed to the bullying and just the environment in which our children function in. There is a lot of data suggesting that the last time our kiddos spent on the phone, especially in the school environment, the less access to social pressure. And there's a tie to bullying, there's a tie to the behavior during school. So getting back to less screen time is a strong push towards helping our kids regulate and not act out, if that's the impetus to why they're treating each other poorly. But there are a lot of different things that are being done, and this is just one of them, that has a strong influence in terms of how our kids are socialized during the day at school.
And really, we're in the early stages of the implementation of the yonder patches. I know $30,000 sounds like a lot. If I can get back the money we've spent on mental health care and what we've, and the time we spent chasing bullying that happens on cell phones, just the trauma that's being caused because of students and social media. If I could, I would pay three times this. So we're really trying to rein in that because we really are seeing our kids struggling with the cell phones. And they admit that the cell phones are a problem. Now, the safety issue, there's a hard line in every, every class, school, I mean, every classroom. There's ways to get the pouches open if they need to get them open if there's an emergency, to look up their parent's number or to get in touch with somebody, they can still do that. This is just a way to have it off and away and really off and away. Now, the high school, you guys are a little bit older, you know, you have some ability to regulate better than some middle school kids. We're going to work through that with you. But the plan right now is we're focusing on the middle school because it's such a formative time and the impulsivity is there, right? And the frontal lobe is not formed. So we're working on the middle school first and focusing just on them with that. Yes, the high school tour, we started by trying to schedule out the rest of the meetings. We know we only have the one a month. We're pushing the schools that folks haven't been in, the high school we have meetings in all the time. We will plan on doing a high school tour, but we're putting that later and trying to get folks into the elementary schools first. So the high school probably won't happen until June, if not July, but we certainly will provide tours for that as well. We might have to put that on another day, not the board meeting, if folks want one sooner than later, Bob. Okay. The high school tour, because that's, yeah, that's... Ms. Kavanaugh brought up a situation at the middle school. The situation occurred was kids, there was a swastika that was drawn on one of the bathroom walls. And a student saw it. The, it got to the vice principal, this is the vice principal that hadn't dealt with this before. He knew the one student saw it, he tried to investigate it, he couldn't find who did it. He got it down immediately, and he did not communicate that to me, and that's the protocol. And we also need to call... And we also need to call the police. Even when you don't know who's done something like this, you need to report it to the police because that's how they track and know how many numbers of cases we've had in Mercer County. Now, this new administrator knows that and we are committed to training, making sure everyone knows because we have a couple of new vice principals and you don't have, you don't deal with these things until they sort of come up. Is there a rise on the racist comments and things that are happening in the middle school? Yes. Middle schools overall are going to see these incidents first. Again, they're young, they're impulsive, and they repeat what they see on social media and what they hear from adults. This is why it's important to do the work that we're doing around educating students around their language, around what these symbols mean, that they're not jokes and they're not funny, and also the very serious consequences. If we did find that student who wrote that on the wall, their parents would be having to pay a visit to the police department and there would be questions and all kinds of things because they have to see if this is a hate crime. This is, they don't know if it's a hate crime or not. They have to investigate it. Anytime there's harassment, intimidation, and bullying report and it has to do with race or religion or somebody's disability, we have to report that to the police in addition to whatever consequences we issue. Are the police working with us to help us keep this in the education realm and not starting a file on your child? They do work very closely with us here in Hopewell and Pennington. Other school districts is not necessarily like that, but we have a great working relationship with our local police department. We try to keep it educational, but if it keeps happening, they're keeping a record of the kid that it happens over and over with the same kid. We work closely with the prosecutor's office who runs restorative circles. They have a detective that works with our students. He trains the students and they run restorative circles at the middle school. They also keep track of the cases that go through their restorative circle and if a child has done something a second time or a third time, they actually go to the prosecutor's office where they get some remediation there. So that's the work that we continue to do. But as this talk about DEI and the work that districts are doing and the money we're spending on, this is what we're trying to avoid is more cases like this. This is why this is important for all students to participate in this education because I don't want them to end up in our, you know, our system, right? So that's why that we spend that money that we do. We use a lot of title money for that as well. Title IV again is for climate, Title II for professional development, for how our teachers are working with our students. We do have professional development on teachers recognizing these things and how they intervene. We do a lot of work with our students and bring folks in to talk to our students around these topics. So we will continue this work and Ms. Kavanaugh and the rest of the community. We thank you for your continued support. We will continue training our administrative team. As a matter of fact, I've done a lot of free training myself with David Nash, who is lawyers that provide training like this. And as a result of me and Ms. Smith and some of my other administrators doing free labor, we've earned some professional development and they're going to be coming in, training our staff on some of these very issues and running scenarios like what happened at the middle school and then giving us, what do you do next? So we are committed to continue doing this work and thank you for raising this because I do want, I want parents to keep bringing this to the forefront, why this is important, that we do this work. The restructuring of administration is we're going through all of our positions and seeing if we consolidate, if we can reduce some of the administrative roles here. And that doesn't necessarily mean a supervisor. It can mean any administrator, you know, there's a lot of folks that support what happens in this building and other buildings that aren't necessarily face to face with kids. So we're looking at all of those positions to see where we can consolidate and making sure we still meet the needs of the district without doing, being too draconian in the cuts. We talked about, the students brought up elimination of a world language. We are aware that there are students that are on a track in one of these languages maybe as their requirement for the three years for high school. We are going to phase out any language that's going to affect students or provide them, free of cost to them, an ability to finish that course of study so that they don't lose the three years that they've, or the two years they've invested and they can continue on their track. So it may not be a clean break to say we're eliminating this language completely, but perhaps phase it out over time so that those students don't have to pay the price for that. We want to make sure everyone is kept whole as much as possible as we make this transition. I think you already covered the preschool question that was asked about the specifics on that, but there was a question about do we cap the amount of money that we're hiring teachers at as we bring them in? We try. There's a big shortage in the teacher pipeline. Folks are not going into education like they used to. We would like to have that, enjoy that nice breakage when somebody leaves at the top of the scale and we bring somebody in at the bottom. When I started teaching, you were happy to get a job and you were happy to get whatever they gave you. Now they're like free agents. They come in and if I'm the only one that applied that, or one of three that are qualified and you offer me the job, I'm negotiating up the pay scale. I can do that the first time when I come into the district and I can. We can try to hold our ground and say, no, we're not going to pay you more than first step. And then they quickly say, no, thank you, and they go somewhere else where they're offered more money. So it's either we fill the position at the higher cost or not. What we're going to do is try our best to, again, try to hold hard on this, not try to higher up the scale if there's somebody that's new that we can train, that we can bring in and we can grow with that teacher. But that just depends on if that person's available. I keep looking at Tana because she's the one that keeps yelling at us, but she also knows, you know, how hard it is. So we're going to continue to try to recruit as much as we can and enjoy that breakage and also to bring in some more novice teachers that can grow with the district and learn the Hopewell way. So we'll continue to work on that as much as we can. And then finally, the parking and the sidewalks at Bear Tavern. Again, I think the board heard your request for improving the parking. The sidewalks is something that we've explored with the township multiple times and we also are working with a Safe Routes to School group that did a grant at Hopewell Elementary. I don't know that there's going to be a grant opportunity there, but we, I'm sure the township would be willing to work with us on writing that grant as the mayor of the borough did. But the sidewalks would be helpful as well because there is a problem over there. So something needs to be done. The idea of the second floor, the whole point of trying to get the township to finally give us a number is so that we can lower the amount on the referendum. Adding that second floor would raise the amount, but if the board is comfortable with us exploring it, I see shaking heads, we can get the number and see what the second floor would cost. The kindergarten and setting the classrooms up for kindergarten doesn't mean they have to be kindergarten classes. You can put a fifth grade in a class that has a bathroom in it. You can't put a kindergarten class in a class that's designed for fifth grade. So any class can go in there, but we do want to make them all accessible for that grade level because by code, we have to.
Yeah, the classrooms, the amount of classrooms we put in the referendum was based upon the demography's report that will deal with complete buildout. And that's, we don't feel that we'll need at this time, any additional classrooms other than the ones that are being built. They are designed to be used if we need them or want them to be preschool classrooms, but what we wanted to do is relocate our preschool and kindergarten classes to that area and move other kids into the pods in the front. So we should have plenty of room right now based upon the current buildout to handle the crowding that's there now.
So the question that, or the example used that there's 10 rooms and if we bring the kids inside, then that's only a surplus of four, is, does not account for moving classrooms within. So just to clarify what Bob is saying, is that yes, we're going to bring those kids in from the trailers, but we have the flexibility within rooms now to move them around. So we'll have more than just four classrooms available.
The other question was about whether we can do different things with the money?
Yes, oh, yes. Yes. No. So once you write the questions a certain way, you have to spend the money that way. The reason why that question was so complexed when you all went to vote the last time we went to referendum is because they're being very specific about how you have to spend the money exactly as the projects are listed there.
Yeah, the question will never read, do you want to add in addition to Bear Tavern? This doesn't work that way. It's written general but specific. So if we were to say, if the township drags their feet and they say they're not giving us the money and not giving it, and then after we strike the question over the summer, they say, oh, we're going to give it to you now, that money would just, the money that the township would give us would offset the debt, the debt service. The sooner they come to us, which means we can bond less debt. So, you know, let's say we're going to go for 80 million. If the township says, we're going to give you 20 million now, then we only go for 60 million.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Awesome with that. Celebration, public comment is now closed and we will move on with the agenda. Any old business items? Gowing the room? That's no. Okay, I need a first and second to move the consent agenda items, which again includes the list of objects, projects, I'm sorry, of projects going to be given for the referendum. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, all consent agenda items pass. Tongue tied. Okay, moving on, we're going to do committee updates and I'm going to start with Dr. Resnick on fine, oh, sorry, Mr. Peters.
I'm actually going to defer to Dr. Resnick tonight.
Right!
I just wanted to be able to introduce him so he can give a stellar report from the committee for this past week.
Well, I think this is going to be pretty quick. We spent time discussing the parking situation at Bear Tavern. We spent time discussing the parking situation at Bear Tavern. There's also a significant loss. So I think what the committee's recommendation was, is let's go ahead and do a study for the few facilities in the community. And I think we've kind of got ahead of that. Where the parking lot would be, we discussed the impact of the potential loss of federal funding completely. That is, a couple of community members revealed the ability that the administration could prepare a plan for what happens completely. And again, as well noted, it's a good thing or a bad thing, but we only get about 1% of our responsibility to the government. Not a good thing.
That's right. That's right.
And last, but certainly not least, the highlightable is every financing facility meeting, which is where Adam and Tom go and get to present the various issues that come up from our previous facilities meeting. So there is a potential problem with an HVAC installation difficulty investigating. And there was a order change placement that would happen over the summer. I noted it as being for Bear Tavern, I think that was... We discussed the need to eventually do something about the playgrounds at Bear Tavern.
I mean, there are playground issues at all four elementary schools that we need to address.
So we'll need to start thinking about that sometime in some way. And last, but not least, the administration is making progress in closing the various gaps and budgets.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Resnick slash Mark. And we're going to go ahead and move on to personnel. No, that's all. That's it.
Okay. Can you hear me? Yes, you can. All right, we're going to go with it. So Personnel Committee meets before all of our board meetings. So we had our meeting prior to this meeting tonight and a couple of things to announce. It's always bittersweet to talk about resignations. These are people who commit a long part of their life to the community and to the things that were all of our children that have gone through the district. So we have a bunch of resignations for retirement purposes that I'm going to talk about today. So Donna Wideman, teacher at Bear Tavern Elementary School, has been in the district since 1989. She is going to be retiring. Amy Parker, school counselor at Timberland Middle School, has been in the district since 1993. Claudia Scotty, a teacher at Hopewell Elementary School, has been with the district since 1993. Anna Lopez, a kindergarten teacher at Bear Tavern Elementary, has been with the district since 1998. Michelle Hamilton, a teacher at Hopewell Elementary School, has been with the district since 1999. Christine DeVero, thank you, school counselor at Timberland Middle School, has been with the district since 2003. Joanne Markelik, Secretary at Bear Tavern Elementary School, has been with the district since 2006. And last but not least, Nisa Elliott, the school nurse at Hopewell Elementary School, has been with the district since 2007. So on behalf of the whole board, we're just very much appreciative of all of the work they've done and the commitment they've made to the community and thank you very much. It's not easy to fill those big shoes, but we're going to try our darndest to do it. We also spent some time talking about the extracurricular appointments that we typically do, which is available on the agenda. And other than that, I am going to reserve some time back and we'll keep moving on, Madam President.
Awesome. So we're going to need a first and second to, first and second to move and approve all the items on personnel. All right. Seeing that, we will need a roll call.
Mr. Cabadia.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman. Dr. Stiliano. Dr. Wilson. Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. We'll go ahead and move on to updates for education.
I'll hold it. All right. So we discussed two items that we spent quite a bit of time on. The first one was second chance learning at the high school. And for those of you who don't know, this is a program. It's a thing that we do in the district where at middle school and at the high school. If kids do really bad on an exam, they have an opportunity to recite, I believe it's one for marking. We've had a couple of high school math teachers who became concerned that, oh, and I should say, the intended purpose of second chance learning was to provide an opportunity for those kids that had just had a really terrible day. Something happened, they weren't feeling well, or they just had a completely off day. They got a, you know, a very low failing grade on an exam that they would have bothered to have done well. So we've had some high school math teachers who became concerned that it was being used for unintended purposes and was actually resulting in grade inflation and was not hitting the population that we were trying to target primarily. They ran a pilot in their classes where they limited second chance learning to only being available to those kids who scored less than 80% on an exam with the grade after they retook it being capped at 80% and they saw...
And they saw results that pointed them in a direction of, you know, this maybe being a corrective action for second chance learning. So, we discussed that quite a bit. There was some feedback from the committee as far as kind of where we would want them to go. I believe what's gonna happen is Principal Riley is gonna have a meeting of the grading committee where they're gonna discuss potential changes to second chance learning. Whatever changes will be made will of course be A for next school year, and they will be universal for the high school. So, it will not be just math or just particular levels. It'll be universal for the high school. And so, they're gonna discuss that, and I guess come back to the committee with what they're proposing. So, there was second chance learning. The second thing we discussed were the Smart Passes. We had both Ms. Riley and Mr. Turnbull, and I have to apologize to him because it might now say Miss Turnbull, but he is Mr. Turnbull. They reviewed the Smart Pass deployment at both Timberland and at the high school. Again, we had a lot of discussion there, a lot of feedback from the committee to the administration. Administration had pointed out that they've already taken a lot of feedback from teachers, from high school students, and implemented changes of what Smart Pass looks today is different from what it looked like on day one of its rollout. What we agreed to do is to kind of let it go on for a while, at least till the end of the school year, and continue reviewing what's going on and seeing what are the patients we can make. Additionally, we've heard from a couple of high school students about the petition that was being circulated. So, the committee had requested that that petition, if it has been handed in or whatever it is handed in, that that petition be provided to the committee. So, those were the two big items, and then Dr. Belice has provided us the new middle school program of studies with really no significant substantial changes from the existing one. So, that was the point. And that's about it. Yes?
Just wanted to add one additional item. Since I think we got so much student feedback on the Smart Pass, we had also discussed Ms. Green, our student representative, attending a future committee meeting to just share more about the student feedback and if there's been any changes since some of the changes have been implemented.
Yes. And so, gentlemen that are out there by high schoolers, if we can get that petition, that would be great, and you can get it to Ms. Green, or, you know, maybe even if you all want to attend with her, that could probably and share the petition. But some of the things that we discussed were, you know, folks who need unlimited, and there are students that have unlimited passes. The high school currently has five passes a day. We talked about that limit. There are currently six periods in the class day, though, at the high school, and one of those is going to the gym in the locker room, so I'm pointing out. Every period, you have access to the bathroom if you need it. But if there needs to be more of that, we just talked about, do we really need to limit it at all? And that's part of the conversation that definitely want to include students in on. But again, just celebrating the students speaking up and really advocating for themselves, we really appreciated that and want more student voices as we move forward in changing things. And the high school and middle school seem to be doing something a little different with that, so maybe aligning those two would be, would be, would be good.
Thank you. Moving on to community relations.
We, the Community Relations Committee, met on, I think, February 13th. It's all a blur now. Drew, I believe Drew and Dr. Genovese and Dr. Trese were there, obviously, had a couple of really good discussions, and probably could have kept going if we didn't have to all get back to our day jobs, I think. So, obviously, talked about the referendum at length and a number of different strategies therein, including had some thoughts about different ways we could reach different constituencies in addition to some of the terrific tours we've been doing, you know, how do we engage the seniors as an example in town here, whether that might be, you know, going to a town hall or however that might be specific to seniors. Also did quite a bit of talk about, you know, sort of community engagement and how, you know, we can make sure that we are engaged in the community. Had a number of different discussions there. Dr. Trese is gonna be working with a group, obviously, related to the referendum. And also, you know, we talked a little bit about, could we do some sort of office hours or, you know, meet the board member? Obviously, we'd all, you know, obviously, there's rules surrounding that, but we had that discussion, and is there ways that we can get out there separate and apart from this and, you know, make ourselves available to the community? We even, you know, talked about, you know, how do we have representation at, you know, certain district events? As an example, the back to school nights, you know, if you're the, if you're the representative of Timberland, like I am, I wasn't at our back to school night last year, but full disclosure, I was traveling for work. But for, for, you know, next year, if you're assigned, you know, that school, that, you know, you should probably attend that back to school night and, you know, sit in the front and say hello to everybody, I guess, within reason, of course. We even talked about, you know, maybe figure out a way to put our photos on our website, which currently don't exist, which I think that would be a nice touch. So, if, obviously, that's something, you know, that I think everybody might appreciate, so kind of have an idea of who we are, what we look like. And I think that was the last bit of information that I was gonna mention, but I don't know. Drew, do you have anything you wanted to flag or Dr. Trese?
I was just gonna add, in our last meeting, we heard a lot of feedback from parents about the importance of board members meeting the community where they're at, especially when it comes to the upcoming referendum. So, I just wanna state publicly, myself, Mr. Slotman, Dr. Genovese, we're all asking the questions on what we're allowed to do, and we are unfortunately bound by some very strict ethics and laws in terms of where we can speak publicly, what we can say publicly. And as we move into the next referendum, it's, I think it's always important to reflect on how last year's went. When the opposition is politically experienced, incredibly coordinated, and highly funded, and we have a limitation on our individual abilities as board members to do the same thing, it really makes it an uneven battle in this situation. So, I just want to be clear that myself and the other board members on this committee are actively pushing and trying to come up with some innovative ways on how we can do a better job of meeting the voters directly where they are in terms of educating folks on the referendum, you know, potentially dispelling some of those pieces of misinformation and disinformation. But we're working through it. There's still some, we have some good ideas. We have some parents who are phenomenal leaders and activists, and we're working with them. But we, as individuals, unfortunately, have some constraints, so.
So, yeah, I wanted to add, because I didn't get to one of the questions, I just realized as this conversation came up. Ms. Hamm asked, "How do you get involved in, on the communications committee?" We had 31 people sign up through either emailing me, and you can always email me to say you want to participate, and they signed up those days that they, when I went to all the PTO meetings. We have 31 people. One of the people that has agreed, and she's one, a person that usually keeps quite a low profile, she happens to be the Assistant Superintendent in Princeton where they just passed a referendum. They use the exact same communication people we did. But the difference was is the parents were in support of the referendum and pushed it over the top. Parents were communicating heavily. The first time around, folks were feeling pinched at the time, and I get it. I only had about, it was a handful of people that were willing to support my communication. That has changed this time. We have a large group of parents. I'm willing to take anyone who's interested in helping. Tonight, having the board tell me I can move ahead with a question, I've already reached out to those people, and I'm gonna actually try to set up a meeting time with that group. Mr. Slotman, I think, wants to attend, and any of the other, as long as you don't get a worm, can attend as well. But definitely, we need your help. We cannot trade on social media with folks. But it would be helpful if we had parents that were willing to drop the website link or specific information that we provide you to put into those places. And I would also ask the community, because I already see it happening again, I'm seeing through social media, the answers to what is happening with the referendum is not on Pennington-Hopewell update. It is on the school website, or please come to our meetings and hold us to account. I'll sit here all night at public comment. We'll have town halls. We'll come wherever you like to come. But the information is in the district. We are the ones that have the bills. You could Oprah anything we have, and you have. The information has to, it's your information. People online may not necessarily have the information that you're looking for. So, we're gonna try to get parents out there as much as possible, but we also recommend, please come to us and ask those questions, because that's where you're gonna find the most up-to-date, accurate information about what we're asking.
Yeah. And I also just wanted to add really quickly. I think from last year's election cycle, we all remember the lawn signs implying that we, as board members, are stealing from the community with our referendum asks.
I've been waiting for my chair, by the way.
We, a big question that I had, and I asked, I reclarified it with Bob as well today, is if I want to go and set up a fund to buy those same lawn signs, I cannot because I'm a board member. So, I will just make an objective, neutral statement. If there's a parent here who wants to fundraise and potentially coordinate some of that, I would be more than happy to see that as a community member, but I can't help with it as a board member.
That was very elegant.
So, so, two things I want to add. One, today during the Colgate tour, we've had two parents make a wonderful suggestion of recording those tours for the people that can't make it, either because of time constraints or, in the case of some of the older members of the community, because of mobility constraints, being able to access some of the places that were highlighted, meaning the people are difficult to access, right? I'd like to strongly support that, to the extent of, well, Tom left some problems, but going back to Bear Tavern and Colgate and kind of redoing that walk for the purpose of re-recording it, but I thought that was one.
We have some little mini films like that, but there's no reason why we can't do like a whole tour.
Yeah. The tours that Tom gives and the voiceover that he provides would be a really good idea. So, thank you for the folks that do the suggestion.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to SEL.
I'm speaking since Jackie's not here tonight. So, we met on February 12th. We discussed the first, the rollout of the HOPE Squad, which is Suicide Prevention National Program that we are implementing across the district. The middle school has begun the rollout, and I was able to sit in with the first meeting of the identified HOPE Squad team members. They were 10 per grade level, so a total of 30, and it was really pretty wonderful to watch that happen. So, of those 30, I believe we have to get parent permission, and also the student has to agree and want to do that. I believe we have 28 out of those 30 who have agreed to do that. We talked about our snow day. We had scheduled to have a national guest speaker, Jordan Toma, speak to our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade at the high school. We are in the midst of rescheduling that speaker for a later date this year. We talked briefly about our principals, and all four elementary schools are working very closely with the school counselors, with Ms. Rutt, our supervisor of counseling, to coordinate the rollout of our Tier Two Character Strong Intervention, which we received a grant to fund for the 25-26 school year. And our SEL committee, along with our STRIVE Special Education PTO, are collaborating to celebrate inclusive education and special education during National Diversity Month, which is April.
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry if this is old business. This is related to the Safety Climate Survey. So, we had discussed a few months ago revamping that survey to just make it more relevant to the measures that matter now, get a higher response rate, and really using that as a tool to understand safety climate and how it changes over time. Just wondering where we are with that, offering my assistance if you need it. It'll be a lot shorter.
Any other questions regarding SEL? Thank you for that. You're up, Mr. Kapadia.
All right. The Government Relations Committee held its inaugural meeting on February 18th. As a brief refresher for my board members and also for the audience tonight, the committee's three-pronged mission is to, one, enhance HBRSC's engagement with local, county, and state government leaders; two, advocate for funding and policy solutions from our elected representatives; and three, explore a long-term structure for government relations efforts on behalf of the board. So, we began our meeting with an overview of the committee's mission, emphasizing the importance of maintaining strong relationships with municipal officials in Hopewell Township, Hopewell Borough, Pennington Borough, as well as Mercer County and the 15th Legislative District delegation. So, in line with this, invitations have been extended to all local officials in Hopewell Valley's three municipalities for all of the upcoming building tours. For those who also are curious, the next three is Stony Brook on March 17th at 5:30, Hopewell Elementary on April 28th at 5:30, and Timberland Middle School on May 19th at 5:30. The committee also specifically discussed the recent Bear Tavern Elementary School tour, which was attended by Hopewell Borough Mayor Ryan Kennedy, and specifically the need to reschedule another visit with the LD15 legislators and mayors who were not able to attend. These tours have been a great opportunity not only to demonstrate the pressing infrastructure challenges that our district faces, but also to build grassroots momentum for the upcoming referendum, and I thank anyone here today who took the time out of their busy schedule to attend the tours with us. On the state-level advocacy front, the committee identified key budget priorities for the FY26 state budget, with discussion centered on an ADA accessible playground at Bear Tavern. I want to thank my friends on the budget, the Finance and Facilities Committee, for giving us that specific item as something that we should be looking to potentially submit a request for. And as I've discussed with many of you previously, this is the first time that Hopewell will ever be requesting a line item in the annual state budget, and this committee provides us a structured path and entity to do so. And given the need for legislative sponsorship, the committee underscored the importance of engaging with Assemblyman Varelli, Assemblywoman Reynolds Jackson, and Senator Turner. We also noted that Assemblywoman Reynolds Jackson was recently appointed as Chair of the Assembly Education Committee, which is a position incredibly significant in shaping state education policy. If there's ever a bill that has to get signed into law, it has to go through her committee relating to education. So, we're lucky to have her as our elected official in the 15th. With that, we plan to request a meeting with her office to advocate for HBRSC's unique policy concerns, including the increased strain on many of our teachers and administrators as we welcome new students from surrounding development and continue supporting our ESL and special education students. Other policy concerns on the agenda, not only being felt in Hopewell, but being felt across the state, as Bob has mentioned very often, include the unpredictable fluctuations in year-over-year state aid, rising operational costs, particularly in transportation and staff health insurance, as well as just general property tax limitations and how much money we can raise for our district annually. The committee also explored potential long-term structures for government relations efforts. Three models were discussed, a formal standing government relations committee that maintains ongoing communication with legislators and local officials. Secondly, a legislative liaison model, as seen in a district like Robbinsville, where a single board member serves as the primary contact for all government relations. And three, an informal advocacy committee model, such as seen in Jackson Township Schools, which is kind of just a group of board members who happen to reach out on their own accord to legislative offices, which we decided was not the path we were gonna go down. The committee discussed the importance of defining clear roles between board-led advocacy and administrative actions, and our next plan is to seek legal guidance on structuring out the first option, which would be a standing committee. Additionally, we reviewed broader political developments, including recent Senate hearings on the state school funding formula. I've been talking about this a lot today and in the last meeting as well, but the revised funding formula, which passed out of the Senate Education Committee in January, has sparked a significant debate over how fluctuations in state aid should be addressed, whether it's year-over-year changes, whether year-over-year changes should be capped at 2% of a district's operating budget or based on the previous year's allocation. So, the committee will continue to monitor these developments and assess their implications for and assess their implications for our funding and policy concerns. So our next steps include rescheduling the Bear Tavern tour with the 15th Legislative District delegation, engaging our legislators on the FY26 budget requests and policy concerns, and seeking further legal insight on establishing a standing government relations committee. That's all I got. Any questions?
Questions? Awesome. Well-led first meeting, exciting. And we look forward to seeing what we can move and make a difference using that new committee. All right, moving on. Dr. Lilston, policy?
Okay. So the Policy Committee met on February 13th. We've been busy. We have four policies and one regulation, which are up for first reading today. And we also have one policy up for second reading during today's meeting. So can I get a motion in a second to bring for first reading? Policy and Regulation 5600, Student Discipline Code of Conduct; Policy 9163, Spectator Code of Conduct; Policy 5701, Academic Integrity; and Policy 2365, Acceptable Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence. Okay, great. So we're going to start with Policy and Regulation 5600, which is the Student Discipline Code of Conduct. So this code of conduct establishes the standards, policies, and procedures for positive student development and student behavioral expectations on school grounds and is relevant for conduct away from school grounds. So revisions to this policy and regulation were made to really reflect updates to state law, movement towards less use of exclusionary discipline practices, like out-of-school suspension, and more use of restorative justice practices, and use of generative artificial intelligence in school. Policy 5600 was last revised in May 2024, and the regulation was last revised in September 2023. So if you want to pull this policy up on your agenda, just wanted to call your attention to a few specific revisions here. So Policy 5600 now clarifies that a student can be denied participation in extracurricular activities, sports, and other school functions as a consequence for disciplinary infractions. We've also updated the policy to reference the Student Safety Data System, which is how the district reports incidents of violence up to the State Department of Education. And last, we've added language to indicate that one of the goals of remedial measures is to provide opportunities to correct the harm done. So this is really to reflect the district's movement towards restorative justice practices. Now, moving over to the regulation. The committee is recommending that we incorporate violation of the AI policy explicitly into the Code of Conduct. More on that to come momentarily. We're also recommending that we eliminate automatic out-of-school suspension for nonviolent first offenses. And in-school suspension options, we've added where only out-of-school suspension was previously indicated. So I'll just stop there and see if my committee members have anything to add to that.
Is it working this way? Okay, sorry. I just wanted to emphasize, I know you touched on this, but I just want to highlight it because many schools in the state do not do this policy, right? A lot of schools are using exclusionary practices, right? Which means you, let's say you have a high schooler who comes and they have marijuana on them and they're automatically suspended out of school. And what Hopewell is doing is really focusing on, right? We don't want those kids home alone when parents are working, right? Those are the kids, more than anyone, that we want in our schools and we want to be watching them and supporting them and providing services to them, acknowledging that this takes more work on our staff to provide that service. But really shifting here at Hopewell to have those consequences in our school where we can support our kids and watch our kids. And just thank you to all the staff for that support and really highlighting Hopewell as an exemplary town in that.
And I think following the evidence on this one, because we do know what works. Any comments from the board on 5600?
Go down, oh.
You can make comments about either.
Well, I'm, it talks in here about regulations, student self-regulation, that sort of thing. Maybe I should get to the policy.
Which one are you looking at, Dr. Wilson?
I'm looking at R right now. I've got two microphones. And it won't work. Anyway, I'm just wondering, is it, is it, do we, do we include in these policies any kind of requirement for data and that sort of thing? In other words, I would really be interested to know on how self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, and relationship skills are working as a board member, how they're working to resolve a lot of the issues, you know, the behavioral issues that may be coming up. Is there, is there any, any way of incorporating some kind of data, kind of data collection that we could, we could use in here?
So it's a good question. So we do view, as you know, the out-of-school suspension numbers, and we also view the violent incident reports, right? So that's something that we look at ongoingly as the board. That's not specifically written into this policy. Are you aware of another policy that touches on that, Dr. Trace?
About our reporting out of our discipline. But it's not in this one.
Yeah.
We did see that somewhere.
Yeah. So I'll tell you what, we can, we can go back and look because we do have in our policy reviews of the numbers related to violent incidents, out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, and we look at those at least annually.
So we could get a sense of how, well, I mean, essentially, this is all SEL stuff. And, I mean, it's, it's a much more positive way of, if you get punished, you know, with, behaviorally speaking, if you get punished, your behavior goes somewhere. If, if you get rewarded for something that's positive or if you cognitively develop some skills that are self-regulating, self-managing, and that sort of thing, that moves you in a direction that's much more positive than the negative stuff that we do. So I would like to see the result of something like this. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay. So we'll move on to the next policy then. So the next policy up is Policy 9163, which is our Spectator Code of Conduct. So in June 2024, so this past June, the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association passed a proposal that requires member school districts, of which we are one, to adopt a Spectator Code of Conduct policy during this school year. So this stemmed from concerns around inappropriate conduct among spectators at sporting events and also just a general desire to promote a healthy playing environment for our student athletes. So among other things, the Code of Conduct is required to include disciplinary measures for violations of the policy, as well as an educational component for repeat offenders. So you may recall that in November, the committee did review NJSIAA's model language for the Code of Conduct and recommended the school district adopt it to meet the new requirements. This policy that we're looking at right now is really meant to accompany that Spectator Code of Conduct. So this was developed to align with the guidance, and it gives examples of unsportsmanlike conduct, then lays out a disciplinary framework that includes disciplinary actions that really increase with the frequency of the violations. The policy guide also does lay out three optional components that a district can choose to include in the policy. The committee is recommending that the board include all three options. So one of them is indicating that the policy applies to away games as well as home games. One is that the violation happens in the last game of the year. The disciplinary action, which usually includes exclusion from athletic events, would apply to the following school year. And then the last one requires an educational component for spectators who are suspended more than two times from attending athletic events before they can attend again. Anything that I missed, Policy Committee colleagues? Okay. Any comments from the board, questions?
I'm curious, how do you, it includes spectators, which I'm assuming are not students. How do you, how do you manage the, that? In other words, we don't have much control over people that, would we have to have police presence or something like that, in other words?
We do, we have banned spectators from other districts from our schools. And usually, the person would get that delivery if it's a parent through the other school district. And sometimes we've had the police deliver persona non grata letters to houses. Yes. But if they're out of district, we can ban them from coming to our site. Now, a parent going off-site may be hard to manage, right? If we say, "Don't come to our game," but they may sneak over to other games. So we can't control that. But yes, I can ban someone who's coming from somewhere else as a visitor in half.
So there's also a sort of camaraderie between athletic directors. Mr. Becker does a great job of crowd control and speaks to parents all the time about their behavior. If we have a parent who causes a ruckus here, he tells the athletic director at Ewing or wherever they're going that this person's not allowed on-site.
So we try to manage it.
There's, there's a pretty good communication between those folks.
I'm just gonna relay my wife's reaction. It's sad.
I know. People get hated at sports. It is sad.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay. So moving on, so Policy 5701, Academic Integrity. This would replace Policy 5701 plagiarism, which was last reviewed by the board in 2009. So that's an older policy. This really lays out the expectations around academic integrity and provides a comprehensive description of what constitutes academic dishonesty, including examples of specific prohibited acts. Policy 5701 provides two options to determine consequences for a student found to have violated a provision in the policy. So one option indicates that consequences for a policy violation should be determined by each individual teaching staff member and include a report to the principal. The second option indicates that consequences for any violation be addressed in accordance with the district's Code of Conduct. The committee is recommending the second option, and we've updated the student code of conduct accordingly, which you'll see in those revisions. We have one addition to this policy. The committee is further recommending language to address the specific dynamics of group work. So in particular, the committee felt that the entire group should not have to face a consequence if one person is identified as having behaved in a way that violates this policy. So we did clarify that in the policy as well. Any questions or comments on this one? Okay. So last up, we have a new policy, which is 2365, Acceptable Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence. So this is meant to provide guidelines and expectations for acceptable use of generative AI by students. This policy guide was developed by a committee of teachers and staff within our district and lays out the expectation that the district will develop a comprehensive AI plan and also the components that must be included in this plan. For example, parameters around how and when staff members can permit students to use AI in assignments. We also want to note here, because of Dr. Genovese's comments at the last meeting, that we have included language in here to indicate that the plan should address how AI may be included in students' 504s or IEPs. Any comments or questions about this policy?
Yep. So, so a couple of things as I read it. I, let's start from the little stuff and then jump up. I get why we use the term generative AI there. Just in terms of future-proofing it. Something more generic. The field is already moving on from being gaga about generative AI to being gaga about agentic AI. There will be a new type of AI six months from now.
Yeah.
We just want to be a little careful about it. I noticed in the preamble that kind of discusses the justification of the policy. We talk about the fact that AI-generated content may be incorrect. We do not talk about the improper use of AI as a reason why the policy is being put in place, and that's kind of odd. I think it should be there. Then, a big one, as I was looking through the plan for what the plan should address, I did not see, and I may have missed it, but I didn't see anything specific there about educating everybody on how to properly use AI. And in the case of AI, it's a very, very particularly acute topic. There are important things that people don't understand. For example, if I go onto my computer and I provide a document that I've written and I ask AI, and I ask ChatGPT or Microsoft Copilot to improve it, I've just taken that text and I put it out into the public domain because it is now, it's now being used to continue to train that model as well, right? So I provided something which I did not intend to provide as training data for this AI model. That creates all kinds of issues that neither the students nor the staff, right? That's new. We've never dealt with anything like that, right? Even if you were using it properly, when you were using it on your local data, your data didn't automatically do what that happened to them. So I think that's a very important thing to happen there.
Are you talking about the policy now or the plan?
Well, well, the plan. But, so that was my last question, though. As I was reading this.
Right. This is not the plan. These are the things that, working very closely with Dennis Smith and our tech folk, said, "These are, these are the things that the district, he would recommend that the district check off of." Struff Esme provided this with this checklist of, "These are the things that you say." But there's a separate plan. Did we share that with you? The actual plan that the teachers have been working with the media specialists on?
You may not have.
So that's a whole different, that's getting into those things.
But, so that gets me to the last comment. As I was reading this, what I was reading is we will have a policy to create a plan, which is kind of weird to me. Right? So yes, I made a comment on what that plan that we're having, since we are going to have a policy to create a plan, the plan should include this educational component, right? But I wanted to just ask you guys to clarify, how does that work? Does the policy get rescinded once we have a plan in place?
No. The plan would be the communication to the parent, how the kids can use it and when. How are you going to educate the kids about using it and the staff using it properly? That's the plan. So right now, Jeff Loesch, who's one of our IT people that's in charge of working through this, has worked through several committees. At the high school, they've developed a plan already of, ahead of this policy coming out with Struff Esme. When will students be able to use it and how?
Right.
The curriculum.
I'm missing my question, though, right? We're, I'm being pedantic here, right? But we're putting in a policy that says, "We shall create a plan."
Yes.
We're not putting in a policy that says, "You shall follow the plan." We're just putting in a policy that says, "You shall create a plan." So once the plan is in place, the policy is not doing anybody any good because the plan isn't like the only thing it says.
Well, but the plan, true, but the, so, but language where, though? I'm trying to get where you need to put the language.
I didn't see language in there that says, "We shall create a plan and that we shall follow it," right? It said, and again, I may have missed it, but what I read is, "We shall create a plan." Okay, that's, we probably need to say, "We're also going to require everybody in the district to follow it."
I see what you're saying. Do you want another?
Well, I don't know if it's another policy, but that was.
Another policy like number 14 or something, or putting in there a statement?
Yeah.
Because a plan is, is fluid. That's why you don't want to.
Right.
Right.
I'm not advocating for the plan and the policy. In fact, I think all of those things in there, to me, were actually too detailed for a policy.
I know, it's going to change.
Right. What was missing is, right, the actual intent of the policy.
I see what you're saying now.
Again, I may have missed it when I read.
No, no, I think it doesn't hurt to put it again.
It is instructing the district to create a plan. Your crack, yeah.
I have a question.
Great, thank you.
If Dr. Resnick is finished, I have a question.
Are you finished? I think yes. Yeah.
Sort of, sort of, following on what he said. I mean, AI is not going to be a stable target. It's, it's going to be a, you know, like a Mission Impossible, possibly. But I, I think. But I, I think that the real concern here, at least with me, is, is what is that? What is academic integrity? And I think as AI evolves, we have to, have to evolve the notion of academic integrity. You know, right now, it's based upon how we do, do, how we create or how we deal with students property and properties or their, what they, the things that they're able to accomplish. But I think that what's really important here is that, and I don't see a, see a, any, any definition of academic integrity, but I mean, I think there's, there's an extrinsic component and an intrinsic component. And it has to be, it has to flow with this, this stuff that's going to happen. And this is going to be a great big, this is going to be a train. It's just going to be rolling along for many years.
Right, thank you.
I was just going to say, I appreciate that comment. And I think we even had some comments right from community members about, about AI and, and you know, how do we train students to use it because of the helpfulness? I think the intent, when we looked at it and other committee members can speak to this, was, was to highlight both sides, right? And so some of this involves having a plan at each of the schools of like, how should students be using it? So not just how shouldn't they, but how should they? But I think, given your comments and also comments from the community previously, we can look at that and see if that's something too that we can really kind of emphasize.
It's going to be a dynamic. It's not going to be static. Thank you.
Nope, okay. Any other comments on that one? Okay, so that's all of the policies and regulations for first read. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or stating? Okay, so can I have a motion in a second to bring policy five seven one zero, student grievance for second reading? Okay, great. So this policy lays out the process by which a student or parent can file a grievance with the school district. I'm not going to go into it in detail because we did it the last meeting. But the committee received no additional edits to this policy during first reading at January's board meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions about this policy now? Okay, I think we do a roll call.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman. Dr. Silliano. Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabadia.
Yes.
Dr. Lillicit.
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You got it. Thank. All right, it's our favorite time. Going to pass, need a first and a second to review the calendars for February and March. Is that a question mark? I think he was.
All right, well, we have obviously personnel will set for six o'clock on the seventeenth. Sorry for all you Irish people. Yep. Let me set your meeting. Finance, the tenth, March tenth, work.
What time, what time are you thinking?
You guys have been doing morning ones. I'm okay with that if you guys want to continue in the morning. Tenth, but if we want to do the morning, you could do different dates. I know some of us, some of the committee does not like to work Monday morning at eight o'clock. What's good on the tenth? Is it, you want to do eight, nine o'clock? Okay. I'm tired of drinking.
Listen, I'll do whatever. I'm up early, it's just a Monday on. Oh, that works, yeah.
All right. Vicki, Ed Program.
I'll let the other.
Uh, tenth is better, if that's possible. Okay, so we'll do a different. Uh, what, what time are you thinking? Could we do five thirty? Do we think that's feasible?
Five thirty. All that, S E L. Community relation.
I'm going to have some problems. So the eleventh?
Then policy.
Can folks do the eleventh at three? No? What, what days do you have?
I, I can do the eleventh. Have to do like four, two. Thirteenth or fourteenth.
I think fourteenth is going to be tough because if we need to go to the attorneys for anything, we don't have any time. What about, I mean, I hate to say this, but it's next week. We could do it next week potentially. Yeah. Would we, with the seventh work next week or? The whole end of the week? Yeah. Is the beginning of the week too soon? Could we do Monday the third? Are you all available Monday the third?
Yeah.
I, I can do that. Manda, can you do five? Dr. Treats? Yeah, okay.
Five PM on the third.
All right. Yeah. Didn't we get it?
Government relations, government, uh, what is it called?
Relations, yeah.
Government, yeah.
Can we, who's? Can you do the thirteenth? We could do, but can we do it back to back after two year relations? Then, yeah, can we do twelve? Twelve. No, thirteenth, March thirteenth at twelve.
Works for me. Okay. I think we now have everyone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or stating? Wonderful, calendars are handled. All right, I have one small new business item. I heard it's someone's birthday today. Tomorrow, sorry. Misread of the communication. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, all right.
That's how we roll. It might just pop up in the agenda. I know your birthday. I, I got the information late. All right, all right, we're going to go ahead and move into our second public comment if there is no new business. Legitimately want to step over. Okay, so moving into the second comment, public comment, I'll remind everyone, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address the municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comments are now open. The time, time keeper's rules still apply. All yours.
Hello again, Allison Lardie, Five State Park Drive, Titusville, New Jersey. I've had more written before and forgot. But it was really my most important point. We do need parent advocates to support the referendum. So one of the things that's really important to me personally and to a lot of us that have kids in the district is that we are one unified district. We are three municipalities and we can see the tension that that causes. We have different values, different priorities and different focus areas each time some, some needs come up. But we need to put forward one question because one district needs the support. And we need to see that across the board and we need to see that really unified support. Part of that, I absolutely love the tour idea, posting it and seeing that. One way to help promote that as a unified front would be, here are the plumbing issues that need to be addressed and will be addressed during the referendum. So that we can see all of the schools, not segregating it into, this is Bear Tavern and only Bear Tavern kids will benefit. My kids are growing up and none of them will be in Bear Tavern whenever these renovations happen. But I understand that a strong district is necessary for a strong community. And we know politically, a lot of the funds are going to look very different in the coming years and we don't know what it's going to look like. So we have to take advantage of the fact that we have a supportive administration in our state at this time. So we need to make sure that we are capitalizing on that. So just really making sure that we have that unified front and we are presenting this as a, a district need, not individual schools. Thank you.
Mailbag is Hopewell Valley. One of the things that you guys mentioned earlier was with the second chance learning. That was one of the things I was going to potentially bring up at a meeting down the road, but it was on top of today, so I'm bringing it up today. A lot of the members of the student body that I've been in communication with are very against some of the new changes that have been made. For some students, I like to think of myself as one. There are, there are levels of success, there are multiple levels of success beyond eighty percent as, as that line. And for a student like me, or most of the, or I should say, many other students at Hopewell, getting an eighty percent is extremely detrimental. So it's not just that like, there, there are kids who, they come in, they have a bad day, they fail that. There are other students where they come in, they have a bad day, they still end up with a C or a low B. And to kind of limit them in terms of what they can do to kind of remedy that grade, in my opinion and in the opinion of a lot of the student body that I've talked to, is just not the way that we should go about second chance, second chance learning the entire time. I've been in the district, it's been a tool that anybody can use, not just somebody whose benchmarks are lower.
Aisling Ronahan, ten four Central Drive in the township. And just a quick plug as a board member for the Education Foundation. I did not come here to say this, but since Dr. Tree already brought this up, in relation to the air dogs, I just wanted to put a plug for parents and board members to attend the Above and Beyond Gala on March twenty first at the Hopewell Valley Vineyards to celebrate and support the governor's teacher awards. So I hope to see some familiar faces there. And thank you for all of your time tonight.
Erin Kroger, twenty six Dublin Road, Pennington. I just want to confirm one thing that was said earlier. So are we saying that the ShopRite District or this ShopRite Development is going to be redistricted to Stony Brook? Meaning that that whole development, there won't be buses going to multiple places? And, or does that just mean new students coming into the ShopRite Development will be going to Stony Brook? I just want to make sure I understand what was said because I feel like I must have been confused. So I just want to make sure I understand. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none.
Bob, you want to hit the ShopRite one first?
The, the way, the way I have it is, everybody from the ShopRite Development will be going to Stony Brook next year.
So another plug for Above and Beyond, March twenty first, thank you for that. I should have gave that a shout out. If you go to our webpage now for the Hopewell Valley, hvrst.org, the Hopewell Valley Ed Foundation now has a button right on the main page. So you don't have to go looking for the website to buy tickets. We hope you come and enjoy celebrating our, our support people and teachers of the year who will be honored there. But also it is a big fundraiser for the HVEF and they donate lots of money to the school districts, tens of thousands of dollars, probably the millions at this point. They've donated to our teachers for classroom projects, for initiatives. The other reason why we have STEM in Hopewell, they were the first STEM lab that they, they contributed money to. So I'm going to make a big plug for that and I will be there with my boots in bling. Because any opportunity for me to put my cowboy boots on, I'm all about that as a Nevada girl. Second chance learning, thank you for the student feedback and I think student feedback needs to be on that committee. We are pulling that committee back together. I also, and we also struggle with that eighty percent cap. And you know, the intent of second chance learning is so that students have every opportunity to demonstrate that they learned the learning goals, objectives. And in its purest, purest sense, students should have that opportunity, no matter what the grade is, right? If they want to take that test again. And the theory is that when you take other tests over again, whether it's your driver's test, whether it's the praxis for teachers, you get the new grade, not, not a supplemented grade. So that's how I feel about it, but I definitely want the feedback of students on that committee moving forward. And then finally, the three municipalities, one question, I know the board is, is hearing you on that. And again, we, we do need to be a unified front in this because all of our kids and all of the community members, whether you have students in the district or not, whether you have children or not, benefit from the high value of your homes as a result of a premium school district that draws people to the school district. So it is a community contract to make sure that the school district lives up to that promise that caused a lot of people to move here, quite frankly, after the pandemic and the development that we're seeing now in growth finally. So I, I also advocate for us to all stand together in this work. And I appreciate your, your comments today, they were very helpful. And I appreciate your help on our communication committee because you've been invited to do that. I think you're on my list, but if you're not, you're going. I think you're on my list, but if you're not, you're going to be before you leave.
I, I just want to say to that, to the point about one question or two. This is an area that I think we have, have had ongoing conversations about because, you know, we believed in the one, one district, to use your phrase, which I think is great. Like this is a united front, this is for all our kids kind of thing, which is why there was one question. And so we've been actively having this conversation about what are the reasons it did not pass last time? Is there, is there anything that helps people wrap their minds around these issues? And that's why, you know, we've tried to structure the distinction between groups of projects. So it would be very challenging to, I, I, I think, I'll let Bob speak for himself, but I, I think it would be very challenging to kind of look at all plumbing together and that be a separate question. I, I mean, that was not your point, but I was, I'm just saying, trying to strategically attack the question while giving people a clear yay and a nay without failing the whole thing is kind of what we're trying to balance. So one of the things I would say is in the, in the communications process, getting feedback from your friends and your peers and the rest of the community on what is, what really is their concern? And do we need to build a fail safe in the questions? I mean, that's what it really comes down to. We've, we've already, the, the administration has already told us what they need. Now we're trying to figure out how to pitch it to the community and really provide us with the best chance of getting the most done. So we'll be continuing to be interested in hearing that feedback coming back to us is whether it is worthwhile to split it. Because it didn't work last time. Okay. All right, we will close. Thank you all for two very productive public comment sections and we'll close number two out. I need a first and a second. We're going to move into executive session where we will with no, no actions will be taken. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, we are closed for executive session. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the community for participating this evening.